Okay, we'll call this regular council meeting to order on Monday, August 12th at 7:03. Please stand for the pleasure of the president.
I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Taylor, would you give the opening page, please?
Sure. Dear Lords, we look after everyone in the city today, and council for this evening. This is gonna be a long haul tonight, and we look for your patience, your guidance, and make sure that we are thoughtful in respect to doing the city business in your son's name.
Clerk Callard Roll, please.
Mr. Lawson.
Here.
Mr. Booth. Mr. Coman.
Here.
Mr. Thomas. Here.
Here.
Mr. Flowers.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here. I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Booth.
Second. Mr. Coman.
Yes.
Mr. Sonic.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mr. Flowers.
No.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes. Okay, did everyone receive the minutes from the last regular meeting and the three special meetings? Are there any corrections to them? Okay, we'll start with the regular meeting on July 8th. I make a motion to accept the meetings, or the minutes.
I'll second.
Yes.
Mr. Sonic.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mr. Flowers.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes. Yes. Okay, the minutes from the special meeting on July 15th. Motion to accept those.
So move. I'll second that.
Mr. Sonic.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mr. Flowers.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Coman.
Yes. And the meeting, the minutes from the special meeting on July 25th. Motion to accept those.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mr. Flowers.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Coman.
Yes.
Mr. Sonic.
Yes.
And finally, the minutes from the special meeting on July 29th. Motion to accept those.
So move. Second.
Um, Mr. Flowers.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Coman.
Yes.
Mr. Sonic.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes. Are there any citizen comments this evening?
I have one, please. It is good comments. I'd like to give a shout out to our fire department, for they have obtained a Class III ISO rating. And with the good P C rating and all of the factors being equal, the price of our fire insurance is going to be a reasonably low thing. And Chief Barber, he can explain more about it, because I don't know all about that. But I know the work that he does for our city to make this possible. As my understanding, that there's only 10% of the cities in the whole state of Ohio that have a III or better rating. And that's huge for us. We do have some good things going on here. And I just thought we needed to start out with a very positive note. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
It's Casey Cox, I live on 210 West Columbus Street. Um, just want to start by saying, so I know most city councils, I forget, it's been a couple of months ago. So just in case you haven't heard about it, my wife's putting on an Appalachian Literary Arts and Storytelling Festival the first week of October on the square. Um, so we do it then on Saturday night, so to culminate in a lyre contest at Stewart's Opera House, which would be awesome, and after that it's a lyre contest. I haven't either, but I've heard about how cool they are, so it'll be really fun. Uh, but then after that, there'll be live music on the square. Um, I think it'll go till like 10 o'clock, I forget the exact time. But um, I bring that up because about a month ago, we brought back up the door permit and submitting that. I remember Tom and Jimmy, he had said at the time, like he was gonna submit that, so obviously it can change. Um, I just wanted to check with you guys, do you have any idea of the status of the door permit? Or, um, I know there's no law or not, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, see if anyone had any updates on that.
I think it's still being worked on in committee. If I remember correctly.
Have we planned a committee?
Um, yes, planning, planning and development, maybe, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, I think we, I thought we had moved that. We requested for that to be completed, um, but uh, because I, I thought we were pretty much done with that. There's, I don't know if we had any more discussion in committee. I think it's all been submitted to the city manager. We just, I don't know if Mr. Collier's had a chance to look at any of the emails surrounding that. But I think it's about done.
I haven't had a chance to follow up with that and see kind of where it's at.
Okay.
I can try and make more feedback.
Yeah, Mr. Cox wants the dates of the literary.
It is possible. It's the first weekend in October, which would be February 5th and 6th. October 5th and 6th.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, I also think, and I, I might have this wrong, but I don't think I do. Um, Lenny Creek Publishing is also having a, um, an author signing at the Elks Club.
Yes, yeah, they're part of the.
Yeah, Gene is going to be doing that, and I'm gonna be down there helping.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be great, yeah. And there'll be a lot of other workshops that day, too. And I mean, there's gonna be a lot of live music, live music for kids, and like for adults, too, and that whole fair, so we're.
That'll be nice.
Signing everything.
That'd be a nice to do.
Yeah, it'll be great, but I'll check back and everything, but once you see, so.
Thanks.
They just did.
Excuse me. My name is Betty Jo Parsley, and I decided 32 East Franklin Street in Nelsonville. I just don't have names, because when you do that, then you get in trouble. But I want to commend everyone that participated in the old timers game that was held yesterday. And Estelle would be very proud that we're taking care of the field the way we are. And all of those people are, many of them, I know we've had city workers, too, but many are volunteers. Volunteers never get thanked, but they don't do it for that. They do it because they love this town, as I have to believe every one of us do, we are part of what takes place here. So two big things to start moving out, and hopefully the rest will go well.
Kudos to the ladies that took care of the children. That was funny, too. That little tiny guy, I thought.
We, we had our favorite there. There's a little dude, yeah.
They tend to let us do that.
That was, thank you, Ben.
Any other citizen comments? Okay, um, I don't, no, I don't believe we have any business and organizational comments, do we, Mr.?
I don't believe we do, Mr. President, but I think, um, if I recall, we had, council had some emails regarding some new businesses. It might be worth mentioning, we have some new businesses in town that just opened recently, I believe. Um, we had Goodwill. Um, I think council, somebody from council may have been a participant, and there was another one, too. That.
Which one was it?
The distillery.
Oh, the distillery, yep.
I can come into open there.
Soft soap.
Soft opening, yeah, that's right.
And there's another new one on the square, the Bob and Jessica Holland Ball's daughter.
Oh, that's such a cool place.
Oh, yes.
Where the old fair store used to be.
The old fair store.
Okay. Thank you. Um, committee discussion, um, most, I think, all the committees met last week. I'll start off, I chaired the street committee that met on Monday. We discussed additional paving projects for '24 and upcoming for '25. We discussed a five-year paving plan, alley improvement plan, storm drain plan. We discussed the railroad crossings in the city. Um, we have legislation tonight for painting the center lines on Rocky Boot Way and September Street. And there was a recommendation concerning traffic flow on Mill Street, Franklin Street, and Chestnut Street. I think that covered it, if I recall. Then also, planning and development committee met on Monday also. We discussed the FEMA plane ordinance, the flood plane, the five-year capital improvement plan. We discussed annexation, the comprehensive plan, the code enforcement department, um, Title 31. We moved that to the planning commission for them to review. An HR policy, which I believe we have legislation tonight. Um, campground regulations, we moved that to the planning commission also. And the door application was discussed. And I think that was it for planning and development. And any other committee updates?
Hertz and Rec, um, we held a meeting as well. Um, we had a great conversation, well, a lot of conversation. Um, Mr. Cox was there. We had, um, Mr. Tudor from Hawking College was there, and had some discussions about, um, uh, the college and the city working together on some grant opportunities. Um, Ms. Parsley, her son, Mr. Parsley was there also, and they were, um, they talked about, uh, we talked about the Tony Hawk Grant and possibly putting in a pump track down in Polly Field. Um, Hawking College also, Mr. Tudor discussed, uh, that we're gonna start the conversation. Um, they're looking to expand some of their sports at the college. They'd be interested in utilizing some of the city's fields for their sports. And, um, but we talked about a lot of park improvements, talked about, we have actually some legislation, I think, tonight for, uh, accepting, um, brand for, for the dog park. I think that's pretty good. We talked about a lot of stuff, so it was very, Mr. Tudor was very energetic and, and, uh, I think that, I think we're definitely gonna be able to work with them on some of these projects. So, and it seems like we have some citizens that want to be engaged, too, in some of that, so it's very, very reassuring.
Thank you. And any other committees?
Oh, finance committee met. Uh, we discussed the funding for the street paving projects, 2024. Um, the life insurance benefit renewal, the dental benefit renewal, which was very minimal increases. Was it like 6% Taylor?
Yeah, 6% for one and 5% for the other.
Yeah, which was very, very minimal, considering. Um, we talked about the national opioid settlement. We also, uh, talked about the wastewater treatment plant operator, record staffing, getting that straightened out. Appropriations for the fire, the new fire truck. Uh, the fact that we talked about changing the financing on that, so that we would have the first payment coming out next July. Correct?
Okay.
And a lower interest.
And a lower interest rate. So that's all good news. Um, appropriations, uh, we talked about, um, supposedly the street, was it Bessmer Road? We talked about that. Um, we also talked about the salary increase and the contracts. And discussed the 2025 budget about getting it on pace to be done with plenty of time to repeat it.
Thank you.
Police, excuse me, police and fire met on Tuesday. And we had a very quick, sweet meeting. Uh, we decided to go ahead and table the, uh, GPS findings that we had for the safety of our, um, our vehicles. And we also talked about a, uh, vehicle, uh, a police cruiser vehicle replacement plan that Chief Tolliver had brought to us. And I think we forwarded that on to the council. And that was it. 20 minutes being met.
Utilities met, and we discussed purchases that we sent to finance to finalize what they wanted to do with it. Uh, as Tony said, we discussed Bessmer Road and the money amount that was involved in that. Uh, Devon had legislation that we needed to address. We also, uh, tabled Resolution 2296 the last meeting. Uh, we had brought that forth tonight. And Mr. Michael Betts was there, and he talked about the water treatment plan and what we have going on forward.
That leaves one committee.
Judiciary Committee.
Judiciary.
Judiciary Committee, the main topic of that was, um, one thing was the proposed, uh, procedures to implement fulfilling a empty council seat to make a uniform way of the way the interviews are done, the way the opening is posted, and the procedures, and, uh, Mr. Lawson provided us with a, a template, which I passed him with looking into. Um, and we'll discuss that in the next, more in the next judiciary meeting. Uh, we talk about review first, yeah, we talked about the review for the city manager. The, uh, which Mr. Flowers has sent a, uh, some templates that he has found. Thank you. Um, we will be reviewing those also, and hopefully be able to bring those to a vote of full council seat.
Okay. Um, department updates, I'm not sure who is up tonight. Chief Barber?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will make this quick one, here we have. Run the load. All right, but also, as usual, this is an ongoing project with Red Cross. We're sole partner with Red Cross now for smoke detector, and if we have them, carbon dioxide detector alarm installs in the city. Remember, these are part of the Red Cross program, which means we have to fill out the appropriate paperwork with Red Cross and send that stuff in with them. It is, uh, no cost to the city, and also to the ones my supplies run out, I replenish them through the Red Cross. Uh, crew members right now are detecting flood testing on fire hydrants. Um, that's gonna be an ongoing project. We added 32 fire hydrants to the system in the city of Nelsonville. Um, once I get those done, we will transition to the fire hydrants in BoCo, because we have a responsibility for those hydrants, so we need to make sure that they are maintained and operate. So when we get down to the city, we'll take care of those ones. Right now, I only have one hydrant that needs repair, and it just looks like it needs a rebuild kit. And I think you guys already have this up and stocked, so right now, we're good. Um, if you remember the last three or four years, we really had a lot of fire hydrants in the city replaced. Like we had, we were in a position of concern before, but we are not now. Right now, I have one hydrant that needs repairing, that's it. Training, as you're aware, and most of us are in training off-duty as well. We attend several off-duty training events with other fire departments in accounting. These would include 40-hour hazmat, hazardous materials technicians classes, lithium battery emergency classes, which is a half-day Saturday class. We've got some future fire officer classes scheduled with Burn Township, or Burn Union, sorry, Fire Department, Hocken County. I have one additional firefighter still finishing up some pro board certifications. Hopefully, once he gets that done, I can get him to cut, uh, on the roster, we can start cutting some waiting shifts that we have. I have, uh, we took, we'd like to take the time to do a lot of public education and safety when we can. We had an emergency response at the Hyatt. We took that time after that to conduct fire safety and teach a class with the kids there. That's some of the PR that we do. Uh, we also do, for the domain, we also teach fire safety classes throughout for businesses. Some businesses have financial benefits with their insurance campaigns if they take these classes. Is that something that people think we can't do? We do a lot of that, we just finished one for the Rocky Good employees. Um, structured fire calls, we have had six structured fire calls since the last update that I gave. One being just a little bit ago, which was an intentional fire with some juvenile. We're looking on that one right now. We, uh, with the warmer weather, we anticipated this, we actually have updated over this call, the big noise, but we're dealing with that right now, well. I currently have three part-time firefighter openings. I know we don't have a civil service commission at this time. But I do have a recommendation tonight from one part-time physician, he feels. And ISO, so this is the big thing for the city. Uh, 10 years ago, when I decided to stay here and test, to change the department, change the way we operate, um, our ISO rating was pretty high. ISO directly affects insurance rates for the community, not only the residents, but also the businesses. That directly affects insurance rates they pay within the city of Nelsonville. I am very proud to say that I have been able to change the ISO rate twice now in my 10-year period of being chief. We are now on ISO Class III. And, uh, to reiterate a little bit, as I said earlier, 10% of the fire departments in the nation are ISO Class III. Nation one. This is big news for the city, and I hope everybody realizes how big this is. I mean, I've had, I've been contacted by insurance companies in the city of Nelsonville for my Facebook posts. He's trying to explain to me how big this is, and I already know, because he put the time in there to get to this. Uh, training, records, apparatus, manpower on scene, everything that we do coincides to a better ISO rate. Down the driver training, how many hours a month we have on driver train per apparatus. A lot of people ask, well, you know, why do we always see that truck out? Everything we're doing, we're logging it. Every time that truck's out, it's driver train. Every time we perform these training tasks, it buys us ISO points, which are the benefits to the community. That's all I've got.
Fire hydrant, I was walking up Popper Street this morning or yesterday morning, and there's a fire hydrant right before you get to where the old Black Lightning, I don't know if you remember that, back, this is lumber company. There's a fire hydrant on the left side right there that's leaking a little bit. Is that, is that the one that you?
No, maybe it's leaking, we'll just check it out.
Yeah, yeah, I noticed just right under where the, you hook the hose in.
It's driven?
Yeah.
Okay, it's possible that the valve didn't blow all the way?
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I just thought I'd bring it up.
So I got a question, I, uh, got an email, says hydrants 20H 120, 20H 119, 20H 117. The first two were impossible to turn on in Pine Grove.
Yes.
Uh, 117 also put little to no water out.
Yes.
So that's a problem.
So Pine Grove has always had a lower volume. Um, we had issues with hydrants up in the area, one of them didn't get access to, because of the fence, the other two couldn't get open. The ones that we couldn't get open correctly were replaced. And the utility department, I believe, found a valve that wasn't open all the way as well. We went up and retested, and we've actually tested the Pine Grove area hydrants three times. And the flows are kind of what's expected with the size of the line and the elevation. But, uh, the volume is not there compared to some of the hydrants.
Would it, would it sustain, if there was a fire up there, would it sustain? Would you be able to pull enough water out of that to, to put out a fire?
Yeah, the quick answer is yes. Um, on top of the hydrants, we also carry water from all other trucks as well. So, once we, when we perform fire attack, we perform a fire attack, I'll go down in, the first truck is on scene, we pull lines off, we initiate attack on that truck. The second truck was a, this truck that actually comes in and establishes the water supply. 90% of the time, that's how it works. On most of the room and contents fires that we can extinguish, we can extinguish on one truck. If we're behind eight on a fire, if it was undetected for a while, larger disaster, it's all going to burn. We're gonna have this, we're gonna have the supply line up though anyways.
Is that what the bumper truck does?
So all, all the trucks have pumps in them, but specific trucks carry more water than others.
Okay.
So to answer the question, yes, we're gonna have water on scene immediately, we're gonna be establishing water supply. I mean, we already know we have, I won't say in an additive, but we have a lower volume. In that area, everything we do at a lower elevation is a little bit more.
I've got a couple of questions now, based on that. Do we, at Pine Grove, because they have a pond or a lake up there, is, if the flow's not strong enough, do you have the ability to pull from the lake up there?
Too much elevation there, you wouldn't be able to pull with a truck.
Okay.
Um, that'd be very, very, you'd have to have inline pumps.
Okay, I just think for anybody who lives in that area, if there's not enough pressure on the hydrants, I was just wondering if you could utilize the lake.
If we had, if we had infrastructure, I'm gonna have each way departments as well swarming in. And their departments are going to bring waters within the meeting as well. Support's acting a fire, they're gonna be establishing water supply, hooking my truck, hooking their truck, relay pumping, truck to truck. And that's, that's how we plan it.
The other question I have is, I noticed when they came up and paved Pleasant View, there used to be a hydrant right at the corner of Diamond and Pleasant View, and that's gone now, which I, I didn't catch it until I mowed, but they, they, I didn't, that looked like a newer hydrant, though. Was that?
They all got put in, everything was, I'll have to look for prints again, but everything that was on prints to be replaced.
We can check it, we can check in our systems.
It just looked like it disappeared, like, boop, and I was like, oh. Yeah, because it was, there was a telephone pole and then the street sign, and it was in between that. And, uh, it was right around, it was right around the time when they were paving, that's why I was asking, I just.
We hadn't got, we haven't done anything for sure yet, we've not paid, there are no prisons going in. There's some contract, we haven't done very good.
Yeah, I know, I was just kind of curious, it just seemed to like disappear all of a sudden.
On your property?
It was on the corner of Diamond and Pleasant View.
Right in the corner.
Oh, uh, I do have a civil service question, though. We, I thought we had some members of the civil service commission already. And then I thought we also had some folks that had put their name in, so I'd be on those committees.
I believe Chief Tolliver, have you had a chance to look at that?
No.
Because it's a three-member commission. There is supposed to be one person on it, but I don't know if that's been confirmed.
Okay, alright.
And we do have a couple of letters of interest.
Okay.
So, but we don't have that for tonight.
We don't, yes, I just, I, I wanted to clarify that. I thought we had names, though, and it'd be nice to be able to make a full commission, because the departments, I think, are gonna need.
Is, is there a committee to move that along? Is that, is that part of a committee that can move that along to where we can get that?
Not really typically, because we've been asking for an update on all the boards and commissions. Um, how many are currently sitting on them, how many vacancies? We've been asking people to submit names of interest, but I don't know the status of that.
We need to update that. Normally, the city manager has that information and can provide it, and he's the one that would recommend, you know, to council to put on there. I just think that if we, if we have folks with the civil service, I think we do, we would have enough between who's already sitting and then these letters of interest, we should be able to fulfill that, the seats on that, and be able to get that commission operating.
I think we need to make that a priority for our, our meeting in September.
Alright.
Thank you, Harry.
Any other questions for Chief Barber?
Is, is there any plans on fixing the fire hydrant at the end of Poplar and Zion, there it's going, it's buried?
The next water project is.
That's part of the next one, okay.
Replacing old lines from one end of Poplar to the other in my eye.
Yeah, my question is, because they, they kind of paved Zion there, and now, and now we're gonna tear that little bit up that they find me.
Then it'll all be repaved.
Saved.
Okay, anyone else?
Thank you, Chief Barber. Thank you, Harry.
So we have something new on the agenda, starting tonight, and that's the city law director update. Mr. Rob, before yours.
So I had, uh, two, two things real, real briefly. Um, I had asked, um, had discussions with, um, Mr. Tolliver and Mr. Sonic and Mr. Coman about uh, an amendment to council rules to add as a permanent, um, uh, an amendment to council rules to add as a permanent, um, agenda item of city law director update. And I thought what I could do with the productive, uh, to use that time productively was perhaps devote five to ten minutes in a series of meetings, just kind of going over a different aspect, each meeting of council rules or provision of the charter just for council's edification, just because I know that way we, we keep coming up with, um, issues dealing with a lot of these uh, rules and charter provisions, and maybe if we can kind of have discussions ongoing about those, maybe then we can kind of, uh, head off some of the issues before they come to a, a real abrupt end. So, um, that will require, um, council action. I'll probably at the next meeting, if it's the pleasure of council to include that as a permanent item, to amend the council rules to include that as a permanent item. Um, the second, the second, uh, item I had for an update, um, I guess during an executive session because it relates to pending litigation that the city's involved with is the, uh, matter of the uh, charter abolishment. I have an update, um, for that. There may be, depending on what council uh, decides as a result of the executive session, there may be some actions council will want to take at the conclusion of the review. All, all, I need to first, uh, update council executive session.
Alright. So we have a couple of ordinances that have been tabled. Uh, ordinance forty-nine twenty-four. I'll make a motion to take that up from the table, and it's the ordinance requiring a ten-day business date period for council to review any written contract prior to council action on the contract. So I'll make the motion to take that up from the table.
I'll say it.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
Oh, I'm gonna make a question. Um, I think the ten-day timeframe might be a little bit too much time in terms of getting day-to-day operations done. I think something more in line with five days probably, but um, you guys might also want to be creating a better policy system around it as opposed to just a blanket coverage, if that makes sense.
Why do you feel that five working days is better than ten working days?
Things move pretty quickly. We need to sign the contract, get the executed and done.
Okay, so you don't think for ten days we work? But we're trying to cover council.
Yeah, I just, I just think ten days can kind of complicate things and draw out deadlines, because sometimes things happen rapidly. You don't have a lot of time for exactly three weeks.
Yeah. Um, just two points to Mr. Tolliver's point. Um, first, well, three points. Um, the timeframe, the first point, the timeframe is just up to what council thinks, because council is the ultimate decision-making body for city policy. Um, the second point is, as an example, one of the, um, items of legislation later on the agenda is an MOU clarifying the police department collective bargaining agreement. That actually arose, I believe the first I was even aware of it was Tuesday of last week. It had to get done very quickly. Um, I think that's kind of a, an example illustrating Mr. Tolliver's concern, particularly given that council's next meeting won't be for another month in September, so it required a little bit of a deft work, um, by the the police chief and the city auditor to get the union to get all the documents together for us to be able to produce to council for today's meeting. Um, the third thing I did, actually, actually, this was just earlier today, I, I was having a discussion with Mr. Sackington, and he raised some interesting questions I just have about disorders that I have not actually had the opportunity to look into. Um, I could, of course, do it before the next meeting's second readings, uh, up to council, but I just wanted to give those three points.
I think the, the reason why this ordinance was even constructed was when the labor, when the contract negotiations were going on, and we received them after hours, after it was signed and, and hours before the meeting. I think that's what we were actually trying to do. I, we could add a clause to it that it's all labor contracts or something like that. I mean, that's what the, that's what really truly was engineered so that we have knowledge of what was going on before we.
Yeah, that's interesting, but those are, yeah, a once every.
Right.
Three years.
Yeah, same. I think.
Blanket coverage is affecting everyone, which is what I don't.
I, I agree with Mr. Dumpy's sentiment there, though. I think that it's, we should make it pertaining to.
Labor contracts.
Well, I mean, I think just not day, because I don't consider that a day-to-day operation. You know, because it doesn't happen daily. Right now, it's a, you know, every couple of years. Um, large contracts like that, just so we have the opportunity to be in the loop on it. Mr. Roe, do you have any recommendation on your thoughts on that, or how we should word that potentially? Because we don't want to slow down the day-to-day operations. Not the intent, uh, not at all.
So, uh, again, obviously, whatever council wants of the overriding policy, uh, that's council's decision. I think be, because the problem that was identified was specific to uh, labor agreements, it makes sense to solve the problem first there. If it works well there, then it can be applied to other areas.
Okay, yeah, that's what it was, that was what it was really brought up for, you know, was that, so that we weren't flying fire. So do we need to amend the?
Well, in light of this discussion, I think maybe we should leave it on the table for now.
Yeah.
And work on it a little bit more and bring it back.
Okay, that's, that's good. Uh, we, we got a first and a second on it, so we'll have.
Yeah, so let's take a roll call and motion to bring it off the table.
Mr. Taylor?
No.
Mr. Lawson?
No.
Yeah?
No.
The Sonic?
Yeah.
Mr. Dumpy?
No.
Mr. Flower?
No.
Okay.
The next, so that ordinance will remain tabled?
It will remain tabled and use a little bit more work on it. Um, the next ordinance that was tabled was fifty-five twenty-four, which was the ordinance abolishing and repealing chapter one fifty-two of the Nelsonville City Code and enacting an updated flood damage regulations. So I make a motion to take it up from the table, ordinance fifty-five twenty-four.
Second.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes. Yes.
The Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. You want me to go after Mr. Nelson? Tolliver. Do we need to introduce it again or? It's been introduced.
So do we need to read it again now? Because it's under first reading again.
Correct.
Is this first reading? The first reading?
Yeah.
And, and we have time for two readings on this still, right? Or do we?
That, that's correct. The, um, the second reading will meet, because I believe it needs to be in place by September twenty-fourth. You know, the second, council can have the second reading at the next meeting. We'll just have an emergency declared to have it going to effect.
Just needs to be.
Correct.
Do you want me to read it that way now?
I would have her read it now. It's, yeah, under suspension now.
Is it an emergency? It is. Whereas the city's existing flood damage regulations are set forth in chapter one fifty-two of the Nelsonville City Code. Whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, and the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, ODNR, propose to require changes to local flood damage regulations. Whereas special flood hazard areas exist within the city that are subject to periodic inundation, which may result in loss of life and property. Health and safety hazards, disruption of commerce and governmental services, extraordinary public expenditures for flood detection and relief, and impairment of the tax base. Whereas it is necessary for Nelsonville flood, local flood damage to continue to remain in full compliance with applicable FEMA and ODNR regulations to protect private property and to avoid impairment of the tax base. Whereas it is necessary for the city to enact updated flood damage regulations by September two thousand twenty-four to ensure that the city's flood damage regulations remain in compliance with FEMA and ODNR regulations. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. Chapter one fifty-two of Nelsonville City Code is hereby repealed or abolished, which.
Um, yes.
Flood damage regulations attached here to Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference are hereby adopted by city council as the Nelsonville flood damage regulation. The Nelsonville flood damage regulations shall be codified in a new chapter one fifty-two of the Nelsonville City Code. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this order are taken in open meetings of the Nelsonville City Council, and that all deliberations with council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal actions are taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. This order shall be in full force and effective upon its adoption newly enacted by council on second meeting the ninth day of September two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, it is my understanding that we have now received the maps. Is that correct, Chief Tolliver?
I sent those in, you know, to all of you guys to view on the floor or something.
Right.
I couldn't open it.
I couldn't open it. Well, before the next meeting, we'll try to have the map so everyone can view it.
Yeah, um, so I spoke to some of the Department of Natural Resources, and the map is finalized. The appeal period is, we said over a year ago. So that's on the pass.
Right. But at least everyone could view the map before the next meeting. Okay, um, I'll amend the agenda for first reading to add resolution two-three-zero-four. I'll make a motion to do that.
Second.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
The Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
I don't know what that, please.
It's the last one.
Oh, oh, yes, yeah.
Taylor?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes. Okay, this is the.
Okay, yes. Alright, second reading on ordinance fifty-three twenty-four. An ordinance requiring all city employees, officers, staff, and uh, employees to complete fraud and abuse training required by the state of Ohio.
Whereas O R C one-one-seven-point-one-zero-three was recently amended to require the state auditor to create training material detailing Ohio's fraud reporting system in the means of reporting fraud, waste, and abuse of public dollars. Whereas the state auditor issued bulletin twenty-twenty-four dash zero-zero-five regarding the new state mandated training. Whereas certain elected officials and public employees have a legal duty to report fraud, waste, and abuse of public dollars, and as such are required to take the new man, state mandated training every four years. Whereas the city needs a policy to implement the new state mandated training and for ensuring that all required officials, officers, staff, and employees comply with the training requirement. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The city manager shall cause a copy of the state auditor's bulletin twenty-twenty-four dash zero-zero-five to be promptly displayed in city hall where officials, officers, staff, and employees can review the bulletin. Two, required training for city officers, staff, and employees. A, no later than September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, and at least every four years thereafter, each city officer, staff, and employee who has a legal duty to report fraud, waste, and abuse of public dollars is hereby required to take the state auditor's fraud, waste, and abuse training. Upon completion of the required training, each officer, staff, and employee shall notify the city manager of such completion of the training as the city manager may direct. Each officer, staff, and employee shall submit to the city auditor a certificate demonstrating completion of the training. Three, required training for members of city council. No later than September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, and at least every four years thereafter, each member of city council is hereby required to take the state auditor's fraud, waste, and abuse training. Upon completion of the required training, each member of the council shall notify the clerk of council of such completion. Each member shall submit to both the clerk of council and the city auditor a certificate demonstrating completion of the training. The city auditor shall maintain records of completion certificates and shall implement a system to verify with the state auditor the city's compliance with requiring the new man, state mandated fraud, waste, and abuse training. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest date provided by law newly enacted by council on the second reading of this update of August two thousand twenty-four.
Are there any citizens' comments on this ordinance?
I, I just need some clarification. Uh, some of the, uh, members or employees, do they, when they start, do they automatically get that and then are not required for another four years? Or is it just a four-year cycle?
Do they have to pass it?
Uh, I could, if I didn't say that right. Let's say that, that one of these council members is only on for one year, and then they come back, and two years later, they get on council again. They have to take it again because it's not in four years. I, I don't know.
And I don't.
Can, am I making myself clear at all?
I'm sure.
Thank you.
I don't know if the city auditor has anything to say to the state auditor directors.
Yeah, the training, it isn't pass/fail, to answer that one question. So as long as the person takes it, it's completed. Um, the first question, so I don't actually know if the person returns later, if they have to take it again. I imagine best practice is the city requires it be taken. Um, so say a person was councilperson, left, was reelected later. Best practice would be they complete it for each term they serve. Or as an employee, each time they return.
Thank you.
I don't know if the states will speak on it, but that would be best practice.
I, yeah, I don't recall seeing anything in the state's regulations.
Would the date on the certificate dictate the four-year period? Um, probably, probably. Um, seems like that certificate would be good for four years, whether you were here a year, left, came back two years later. Mm-hmm. You still had a year left on the, the date on the certificate itself.
It's a good question. So my, for example, I have to complete, uh, twenty-four hours of training for every term as a fiscal officer um, under similar requirements. If I were to leave or say become a different fiscal officer, I have to just start training again. Um, I know that's different, but it's just an example of the state rules can kind of vary.
They're not always cut and dry like.
And they're not always cut and dry. I usually tell folks it's best to just always have it. Um, because sometimes the discretion is left up to the local person, and you'd rather just not have the question.
It would hurt.
It wouldn't hurt, right? I think it's seven minutes, so.
Yeah. I was gonna reiterate, uh, it's really short. It's really short training. It's a formality. Um, it doesn't take any time for the employee to get through it. Myself and one of my firefighters have already done it, so that's just eight, eight, nine minutes.
Better safe than sorry.
Any council discussion? Under that, um, I believe council, all members have already done it. I have.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have. So. Any other discussion with that motion to adopt? Quick call.
The Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yeah.
Yes.
So ordinance fifty-three-twenty-four passes. Uh, second reading, ordinance fifty-four-twenty-four, an ordinance establishing a schedule of fines for Nelsonville Mayor's Court.
It's the second.
Second reading, I believe.
An ordinance establishing a schedule of fine for Nelsonville Mayor's Court. Whereas council has established Nelsonville Mayor's Court to hear such cases that fall within the jurisdiction under Ohio law for a mayor's court for the city of Nelsonville. Whereas there is a need for council to establish a schedule of fines for Nelsonville Mayor's Court. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The schedule of fines for Nelsonville Mayor's Court as set forth in Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein by reference is hereby adopted by council. The mayor's court clerk shall pay, shall make the schedule of fines available to any person who requests a copy. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and that all deliberations of council and of its committee, if any, which resulted in formal action were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. This ordinance shall not be construed to amend, to amend any law or fine previously enacted by a separate ordinance of council. Nor shall any part of this ordinance be construed as impairing or limiting council's authority to amend any law or fine for any offense prohibited by law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption, newly enacted by council on second reading from the day of ours two thousand twenty-four.
Are there any citizens' comments on this ordinance? Council discussion? Motion to adopt.
I sent Ms. Sonic and Mr. Flower the separate fine schedule for consideration. Like the fines, you know, current exhibit are a little bit on the high end. I don't have a chance for you to do more.
I have looked at it, but only briefly, um, today. And guess what? Good, um, since this is on second reading, this could just be passed and then amended once.
Plus that, the high end can be reduced.
Correct. So, so that, that's right, the magistrate can't impose a fine for any of these offenses higher than that.
Right.
Be lower, conceivable, could be zero.
Yeah. What do you mean high end, chief? Compared to other cities?
Yeah.
So.
Our primary concern is the, the fines that are for the individuals who are not going to attend court, the fines someone can just come to the department and say, we don't have a mandatory court here.
Is that a game?
There's some fines where there's, you don't have to attend mayor's court, you're given a normal like speeding ticket.
Uh-huh.
So you'll just know how much the fine amount is, you come to the police department, pay the clerk, and then you're done.
So would that still have the court cost on?
Yes. They always have the court cost. But there's typically a.
Are these, are these figures with the court cost in?
Yes, yes.
So like, for example, just an example of Mr. Tolliver, suppose, suppose a citizen is pulled over for slow speed, the fine here is a hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which if they just elect to pay it, they have to pay the hundred and seventy-nine, even though if they came to mayor's court, perhaps the magistrate would say, I think it should be whatever, much lower than that. Um, I think that's what.
Yes.
The chief is getting that, a situation kind of like that. And, and maybe the person just doesn't want to come to mayor's court because, well, maybe they have some family, let's say some family emergent, well, family health issue that they know has to be addressed on that day and they can't come. Is it fair to that person to impose on them that high of a fine? The magistrate wouldn't, we know that the magistrate wouldn't impose. Is the only way to appeal that, um, is in person at mayor's court or?
Any other discussion?
I was just gonna ask this same clarifying question that, sorry Nancy, can't see. The, these amounts do include court costs of?
Yes.
So usually in the past, it would say fif, for example, seat up, for example, might say, um, a certain number and then court cost would be added on top at the bottom if you sold. So I just wanted to clarify these two.
That's why I asked.
Court costs.
Exactly.
The court cost would be seventy-five dollars and then it would be up to the magistrate to decide lower.
Okay.
As far as the fine itself is.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, uh, motion to adopt.
Second.
Quick call and roll.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-four-twenty-four passes.
Um, Mr. Coman, before we move on to first reading, um, I don't know if this is a point of order, but, um, Mr. Booth that actually texted me, uh, this would probably fall under the business organizational comment. We, he reminded me of the email that we received from, that he forwarded on from, um, Ms. St. Far, uh, from the, uh, development of disabilities. Um, and that she originally sent months ago, um, to the city manager and didn't, uh, hear back. And so she forwarded on an email again to, uh, Mr. Booth, um, and was looking for collaborating with the city, uh, with folks with disabilities. I don't know if this is the appropriate time or if you want to bring it up, want to bring it up during good of the order, but I just, I didn't want to, I forgot about it, he just texted me about it.
Um, yeah, let's discuss that under good of the order.
Okay.
And take a look at that. I, I have the email here, so. Ordinance fifty-seven-twenty-four, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a lease purchase agreement for a commander pumper fire truck, repealing ordinance fifty-one-twenty-four and declaring it an emergency. Would someone like to introduce it?
Whereas the city of Nelsonville is in need of a new commander pumper fire truck. Whereas the city manager and fire chief recommends that a new commander pumper fire truck be obtained via a lease purchase agreement, fifteen-year loan option. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City manager, acting city manager and/or police chief is hereby authorized and instructed to execute a lease purchase agreement with a community leasing partner for a new commander pumper fire truck for the sum of five hundred ninety-four thousand one hundred nineteen dollars on a lease purchase agreement, fifteen-year loan option as set forth in Exhibit One, attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. Ordinance fifty-one-twenty-four to by repeal. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. By members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance and this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading to O R C seven thirty-one-point-fifteen and Nelsonville City Charter, section four-point-zero-nine through four-point-one-one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one-point-thirty, Article Four, Section four-point-zero-nine through four-point-one-one, as an emergency in the operation of city government, as the contract must be completed immediately and the fire truck is available now at the contract price and the purchase of the firetruck is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. The city auditor shall take all steps necessary to complete and execute to disperse the funds authorized by this ordinance, newly enacted by council on first reading of suspension of the rules on the twelfth day of August two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules.
So move. Second.
Um, Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Uh, motion to adopt?
So move. Second.
Are there any citizens' comments on adoption? Any council discussion?
Just so the citizens know, this is a reduction in what the original price was and a less interest rate. That is the reason we're doing this.
Okay, uh, quick call and roll on adoption.
Um, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Uh, ordinance fifty-seven-twenty-four passes. Ordinance fifty-eight-twenty-four, an ordinance tentatively awarding the construction contract for the regional collection system improvements, Phase Four project. Would someone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
An ordinance tentatively awarding a construction contract for the regional selection system improvement, Phase Four project to D V Weber Construction Incorporated, subject to final approval and financing for the project from the Ohio EPA and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville seeks to complete regional collection system improvement, Phase Four project. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has applied to the Ohio EPA for financing for the project and is awaiting final approval of financing. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city of Nelsonville tentatively awards the construction contract to D V Weber Construction Inc. in accordance with the engineer bid recommendation letter, subject to the final approval of financing for the project from the Ohio EPA. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. By members of council voting to suspend, to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance and this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading to O R C seven thirty-one-point-fifteen and Nelsonville City Charter, Section four-point-zero-nine through four-point-one-one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one-point-thirty, Article Four, Section four-point-zero-nine through four-point-one-one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government, as the contract must be awarded immediately to ensure timely completion of the project necessary to the provision of public utilities within the city and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon adoption, newly enacted by council on first reading, under suspension of the rules, the twelfth day of August two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to suspend the rules?
So move. Second.
Roll call on suspension?
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
So move. Second.
Any citizens' comments on adoption?
Is this the water treatment plant, the sewer treatment? What is it?
Um, Mr. Cohen, could you?
What project is?
Uh, Phase Four?
For, uh, Phase Four is just sewer project. He was gonna look into adding sewer to Phase Four. But right now, phase, because we have so much contingency money, but right now Phase Four is Riverside Drive, Scott Street, and San Juan.
Any council discussion on adoption?
Move to adopt?
Quick call and roll.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-eight-twenty-four.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance fifty-eight-twenty-four passes. Ordinance fifty-nine-twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing settlement of certain litigation and authorizing payment in case number two-four-C-one-zero-one-four-four.
So, um, council can have a reading now. I would suggest that it is a reading now that it be tabled until after executive session so I can discuss certain matters pertaining to this to council in executive session in relation to pending litigation. Or it can just, um, if there's a motion to amend the agenda, just place it after the executive session, would be my recommendation.
So a motion to add it after executive. Okay, there's a motion on the table?
Second.
Any council discussion? I'm, I'll make a motion. And Mr. Taylor?
Second.
Seconded.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ordinance sixty-twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing a monthly stipend for the acting city manager for additional temporary duties and declaring an emergency. Would someone like to introduce it?
Oh, introduce it.
An ordinance authorizing a monthly stipend for the acting city manager for additional temporary duties and declaring emergency. Whereas on July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, city council appointed Devin Tolliver, Nelsonville Police Chief, to serve as acting city manager for the city on a temporary basis. Whereas council finds it appropriate to provide an additional monthly stipend to the acting city manager for the additional temporary duties assumed by the acting city manager. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City council hereby confirms the appointment of Devin Tolliver, Nelsonville Police Chief, to serve as acting city manager for the city on a temporary basis pending council's investigation of the city manager. The acting city manager shall be provided an additional monthly stipend for additional temporary duties in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars. The additional monthly stipend shall be backdated and prorated to the date of appointment as acting city manager, which date is July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. When the acting city manager for any reason shall cease, assuming the additional temporary duties, the additional monthly stipend shall cease. The city auditor is hereby authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to carry the provisions of this ordinance into effect. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. By members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance and this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading to O R C seven thirty-one-point-fifteen and Nelsonville City Charter, Section four-point-zero-nine through four-point-one-one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one-point-thirty, Article Four, Section four-point-zero-nine through four-point-one-one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government, as the city needs an acting city manager to temporarily serve as chief executive of the city and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon adoption, newly enacted by council on first reading on the twelfth day of August two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to suspend the rules?
So move. Second.
Roll call on suspension?
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Okay, um, motion to adopt?
So move.
Citizens' comments on adoption?
Yes.
This equates to like thirty thousand dollars a year, and I'm not against Devin or the position that I am from the finance standpoint. You're going to be paying more for Opers and you're gonna be paying more in the Medicare area. Um, where does this put him in line with the current city manager?
So I believe this is just hopefully a temporary appointment?
I understand that.
Hopefully a month, two months. His main job right now is to make sure all documents are signed for legal contracts, considering money, and it's just trying to keep the city going on a day-to-day basis. He did it six months last year with no pay whatsoever.
I realize that. I've asked a question. Can I get an answer?
It'll be more.
Pardon?
It'll be more than the acting city manager is getting paid right now.
How much more?
Thirty thousand dollars per hour. No, what's your, what's your?
Seventy-six. Seventy-six more on there?
So if we were to go to both? Sixteen thousand.
But usually a temporary person who doesn't have the experience or the background would not be making more than the permanent city manager.
Okay.
All right, okay. Any other citizens' comments? Council discussion, I'm sorry?
I, I just would agree with that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Council discussion?
I believe he's got the experience and filled it because he filled it for six months without knowing anything. So the experience is there, his qualifications are there, so I, I don't see where the objection.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Flowers?
Yeah, uh, I, the only objection I have is, is like Sue said, with twenty-five hundred extra a month, I find that excessive as far as back the rate.
So what, what do you feel would be?
Well, I mean, I, I, I knew this was coming, so I thought it was going to be something on the order of, he's making seventy-six-five, Con Jimmy's making eighty. The difference would be to him of what Con Jimmy would make.
If I may?
Yes.
Chief Tolliver has had to go back and redo a lot of issues that were not done in the past. He therefore is cleaning up and deserves every single penny that we choose to give.
I'm not saying he doesn't deserve.
Then the point.
That's not the point.
All right, we're very off. We got.
Yeah, that's a. Council discussion, um, any other comments?
Yes, we can.
No, I guess, I guess my question would be if he's getting paid currently as the police chief at seventy-six-five and yet another twenty-five hundred in there, that's that basically is the difference between the city manager and his position currently.
That's a month.
Oh, twenty-five hundred a month would be at thirty thousand.
If he worked for an entire year there.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, you're adding it to the seventy-six, and that's an annual.
I mean, I mean, we also, Mr. Flowers, I mean, if you recall, we, we also gave the fire chief a, a raise and we didn't, and it was substantial more than, more than the twenty-five hundred a month.
Well, I think Harry's got twenty-five years here at the city building also.
I'm just stating, there was no, there was no, there was, he, he's, he's, we moved him in a.
I don't have anything against it. I have nothing against it. It's the money, that's all I'm talking about.
Sorry, Tony.
No, I think he does a great job.
I think he does too, Tony. I'm not saying he doesn't. I'm saying the money is the issue. Twenty-five hundred dollars a month is a lot of money.
So I'll, I'll ask you again, Mr. Flowers, what, what do you feel would be appropriate?
I just told you, Mr. Command, that I think that this supplement, the supplement of what Con Jimmy would make a month, add it to his monthly salary. That's what I think. Six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars a month is what Mr. Con Jimmy makes a month. That's.
So the fact that he has to go in there and clean up?
That, that, I don't, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that that's not, that, that's not the situation or that's not the issue. The issue is the difference between the salary that the, uh, that the city manager makes and the salary that he makes. I've got nothing against paying him, but I think twenty-five hundred dollars a month is, is excessive. And I, I.
You go ahead and say your vote, then council should be.
Can I make a suggestion?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, this is council discussion.
I think it's time we move forward on that.
Yes.
Okay, um, clerk call and roll, please.
Mr. Flowers?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I was just gonna add that the average full-time city manager pay, including cities and villages, smaller than ours, is a hundred forty thousand, six hundred forty-four. So I do think when we have this conversation, we need to realize that the pay for the position, when we talk about that for other positions, we also have an incredible gap in our city manager salary. And I think if we are gonna talk about salary in full, we should talk about the full context of where Nelsonville lies. This one, put that out there. What I'm looking at was the fourth lowest in state for full-time city managers. That's the two thousand twenty-three O M L salary survey.
This is for the same type of city situation, uh, population size?
This would be all cities and villages with a city.
All cities and villages.
With a, with a manager, with a, either city manager or village administrator. So we, we talked about this before, but I just want to make sure before we mention too many names or too many positions, that when we talk salary in Nelsonville, I'm not trying to compete with Columbus. However, positions are paid certain amounts, um, for a reason. And Nelsonville currently stands at fourth to the last in that position.
Shouldn't this actually be discussed in executive session?
No.
It was discussed in final, yeah, it was discussed in open session. In open session.
You're mentioning his name, their names and everything, and I was always told that we didn't.
What names? What names were you getting there?
Okay, so we're gonna call the roll now, please.
Mr. Flowers?
Yeah.
One more time. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ordinance sixty twenty-four passes.
If, if I may, maybe what, since this is temporary, um, or maybe at the next council meeting, it should be revisited whether temporary duties would still be necessary. Yeah, I think given the situation, probably going to be.
A month a month thing.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Ordinance sixty-one twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing various city officers to enter into negotiations or resolving matters before the Internal Revenue Service. And would someone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
Second. An ordinance authorizing various, whereas the city properly completed, mailed and submitted informational filings to the Internal Revenue Service for two thousand twenty-two by U.S. regular mail. Whereas the IRS has informed the city and never received the mailing. Whereas council finds that the city duly submitted informational filing for lost in the mail or misdirected by the IRS. Whereas there is an immediate need for the city to negotiate with the IRS to avoid any late fees and/or penalty due to the lost mail. Whereas it is prudent to submit on a temporary basis an interest-bearing deposit with the IRS while negotiations are ongoing. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City council hereby authorizes and directs the city manager, acting city manager and/or police chief to get through the city auditor and city attorney to take any and all actions necessary to comply with and negotiate with the Internal Revenue Service to resolve the issues pertaining to the information filing for next year twenty twenty-two that were lost in the mail. Such actions shall be taken with the goal of eliminating any potential liability to the city. Should the city manager, acting city manager and/or police chief determine a temporary deposit with the IRS as prudent and necessary, the city auditor shall provide such temporary deposit to the IRS while negotiations are ongoing. Council hereby declare and accept that any deposit authorized by section two of this ordinance is and shall be of a proper public purpose. So, warning, in repeat of the situation in the future, the city auditor is hereby instructed to submit all files with the IRS via confirmed delivery services, for example certified mail which we can receive requests or via electronic filing. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. By members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance. And this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading to O R C seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter section one four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty. Article four, section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government as the city used to negotiate with the IRS to minimize and eliminate any liability to the city and if necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, moral, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effective upon adoption. It will be enacted by council on first reading on the twelfth day of August two thousand twenty-four as we spend the rule.
Motion to suspend the rules?
So move. Second.
Roll call on suspension of the rules?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
So move. Second.
Are there any citizens' comments on adoption? Council discussion on adoption? Clerk call and roll?
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ordinance sixty-one twenty-four passes. Uh, ordinance sixty-two twenty-four, an ordinance adopting a trenching and excavation safety policy for the utility department. Would someone introduce it, please? I'll introduce it.
Whereas the Ohio Department of Work and Compensation Public Employment Risk Reduction Program requires that the city adopt a trenching and excavation safety policy to ensure safe operation and practice of in the utility department. Whereas in two thousand twenty-three, it was cited by P E R T for unsafe operations and practices. Whereas the acting city manager has developed a trenching and excavation safety policy, which has been approved by PERF. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City council adopts the trenching and excavation safety policy for the utility department of the city of Nelsonville attached here to as exhibit one and which is incorporated herein by reference. City manager, acting city manager and/or police chief is hereby directed to authorize and authorized to take all steps necessary to mitigate and remediate the city's PERF citation for two thousand twenty-three. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. It will be enacted by council on second reading the ninth day of September two thousand twenty-four.
Ordinance sixty-three twenty-four, an ordinance amending ordinance fifty twenty-four and sending the authorized staff in the city departments. Would someone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
Whereas the existing two thousand twenty-four staffing ordinance has been amended several times in two thousand twenty-four. And the final version of the staffing ordinance was enacted by council by ordinance fifty twenty-four. Whereas there is a need to amend ordinance fifty twenty-four to include a part-time wastewater treatment plant operator of record to fill in for the wastewater treatment plant supervisor when the wastewater treatment plant supervisor is taking time off. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Section three of ordinance fifty twenty-four enacted by council on the eighth day of July two thousand twenty-four is hereby amended to read as follows. Staffing in the utility department is as follows. One full-time service director, one full-time wastewater operator of record, one part-time wastewater operator of record to fill in for the wastewater operator of record when necessary, and eleven utility technicians. Utility department pay chart, the exhibit A attached Q Q and incorporated herein by reference. The part-time wastewater operator of record shall be compensated at a rate of fifty dollars per hour effective June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The utility department pay chart set forth in ordinance fifty twenty-four shall remain in full force and effect, and nothing in this ordinance shall be construed as modifying the utility department pay chart except as expressly provided for in section three of this ordinance, existing section three of ordinance fifty twenty-four enacted by council on the eighth day of July two thousand twenty-four is hereby revealed. Nothing in this ordinance shall be used or construed to renew or repeal future pay increases or offered benefits already approved by contract or city council ordinance. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. By members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance. And this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading to O R C seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter section four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty. Article four, section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government as the part-time wastewater treatment plant operator of record has already provided services to the city and needs to be compensated and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, moral, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effective upon adoption. This ordinance shall be backdated and made effective as of June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The city auditor shall take all steps necessary to complete and effectuate the pay increase, which shall be enacted pursuant to the provisions of this ordinance will be enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules to twelfth day of August two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to suspend the rules?
So move, second.
Roll call on suspension of the rules?
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
So move. Second.
Any citizens' comments on adoption? Any council discussion on adoption? Clerk call and roll on adoption?
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Ordinance sixty-three twenty-four passes. Ordinance sixty-four twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing the city auditor to sign a six percent increase renewal with a delta benefit and declaring an emergency. Someone like to introduce it?
Or, go ahead. Real quick, before we, I'm so sorry to interrupt. Before you read it, could you just, it needs to say city manager. I noticed my title's in there. Uh, the city manager is the signing authority, so.
Okay.
Could this one, the next one, say authorizing the city manager to? Thank you.
Whereas it is necessary for the city manager to sign a six percent increase renewal agreement for dental insurance for the city of Nelsonville with delta benefit. Whereas this would be the routine and annual renewal agreement for another year. Whereas the increase in premium at six percent, Whereas the increase in premium is six percent, which council finds is the best option available to the city at this time considering inflation rate. Whereas this is the first increase in premiums in several years. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City manager is hereby authorized to sign a six percent increase renewal for dental insurance for the city of Nelsonville with dental dental as set forth in the contract attached here to and incorporated as exhibit one. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. Five members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance. The rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance and this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading through O R C seven thirty one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter section four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty one point thirty, article four, sections four point zero nine through four point one one as an emergency in the operation of the city government as the city needs to provide full insurance benefits to its employees and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Will enacted by council on first reading on the twelfth day of August under suspension of the rules.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second. Roll call on suspension?
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen?
Yes.
Uh, motion to adopt?
So moved.
Any citizens' comments on adoption? Any council discussion? Call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes. Ordinance sixty four twenty four passes. Ordinance sixty five twenty four, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign a five percent increase renewal with principal life insurance company and declaring an emergency. Someone like to introduce it?
How would you say?
Whereas it is necessary for the city manager to sign a five percent increase renewal agreement for life insurance for the city of Nelsonville with principal life insurance company. Whereas this would be the routine and annual renewal agreement for another year. Whereas the increase in premium is five percent, which council finds is the best option available to the city at this time considering rates of inflation. Whereas this is the first increase in premium in several years. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City manager is hereby authorized to sign a five percent increase renewal for life insurance for the city of Nelsonville with principal life insurance company and set forth in the renewal rate letter attached here to and incorporated as exhibit one. City council find, hereby finds this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. Five members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance and this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading to O R C seven thirty one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter section four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty one point thirty, article four, section four point zero nine through four point one one as an emergency in the operation of the city government as the city needs to provide full insurance benefits to its employees and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Will enacted by council on first reading on the twelfth day of August two thousand twenty four under suspension of the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second. Roll call on suspension of the rules?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes. Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Are there any citizens' comments on adoption? Any council discussion? On the roll on adoption?
Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Ordinance sixty five twenty four passes. Ordinance sixty six twenty four, an ordinance creating fund number four two one opioid settlements fund and declaring an emergency. Someone like to introduce it? How would you say?
Whereas opioid drug abuse and overdoses have reached epidemic levels and have accordingly strained public health budgets across the state of Ohio, including those of the city of Nelsonville. Whereas pharmaceutical drug producers and retailers should be held accountable for their actions in creating, perpetuating, and exacerbating the opioid drug abuse and overdose epidemic. Whereas recent class actions have sought to hold such producers and retailers accountable and provide payments to public bodies, including the city of Nelsonville. Whereas the city of Nelsonville is entitled to certain settlement payments from such producers and retailers. Whereas there is a need for the city to create a new fund to receive such settlement payments. Whereas the auditor of the state has specifically stated this fund does not need its approval as it is part of settlement demand. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city auditor shall create fund number four twenty one opioid settlement fund in accordance with Ohio law. The city manager, acting city manager and/or police chief is hereby authorized to sign any quarter proof national opioid settlements, including that with the Kroger company. All funds received by the city of Nelsonville from the National Opioid Settlement, including with the Kroger company, shall be deposited as revenue in fund number four twenty one. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in meetings open to the public as required by applicable law. Five members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance and this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading to O R C seven thirty one point four one five and Nelsonville City Charter section four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty one point thirty, article four, section four point zero nine through four point one one as an emergency in the operation of the city government as the city needs to provide or deposit of court settlement funds relating to the opioid drug abuse and overdose epidemic and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Will enacted by council on first reading on the twelfth day of August two thousand twenty four under suspension of the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second. Roll call on suspension?
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes. Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Are there any citizens' comments? Council discussion? Call the roll.
Ms. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes. Ordinance sixty six twenty four passes. Ordinance sixty seven twenty four, an ordinance to authorize the execution of then and now certificates by the city auditor and the payment of amounts due for various purchase orders. Someone like to introduce it?
How would you say?
Whereas pursuant to Ohio Revised Code section five seven zero five point one four D one, the city may not enter into any contract or give any order involving expenditure of money unless there is attached thereto a certificate of the city auditor that the amount required to meet the obligation has been rightfully appropriated for such purpose and is in the treasury or in the process of collection to the credit of an appropriate fund free from any previous encumbrances. And whereas the Ohio Revised Code section five seven zero five point four one D one further provides that in such circumstances when no certificate is furnished as required and the expenditure is for three thousand dollars or more, the city council, as the city's taxing authority, may authorize the drawing of a warrant in payment of amounts due upon such contract or order upon certification by the city auditor that there was at the time of the execution of such certificate a sufficient sum appropriated for the purpose of such contract in the treasury or in the process of collection to the credit of an appropriate fund fee from any previous encumbrances. And whereas such certificate of the city auditor is known as a then and now certificate being that the funds were available when the contract was made and when the amount due under the contract was or is paid. And whereas the city is issuing then and now certificates in connection with payments due and owing as shown on exhibit one attached. And whereas city council deemed it to be in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the city to approve the execution by the city auditor of then and now certificate and to authorize the payment of amounts due under the contracts or orders requiring expenditures of three thousand dollars or more. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. That the council of the city of Nelsonville pursuant to section five seven zero five point four one D one of the Ohio Revised Code hereby approves the execution of the then announced certificates by the city auditor and authorizes payments due and owing in accordance with schedule attached here to as exhibit one and incorporated herein. That is bound and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this ordinance were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and of any of its committees that resulted in any formal actions were in meetings open to the public and compliance with all legal requirements, including section one twenty one point twenty two of the Ohio Revised Code. Five members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance and this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading through O R C seven thirty one point one five and the Nelsonville City Charter section four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty one point thirty, article four, section four point zero nine through four point one one as an emergency in the operation of the city government as the city needs to pay various outstanding invoices for services rendered to the city. It's necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Will enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the twelfth day of August two thousand twenty four.
Motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second. Roll call on suspension?
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen?
Yes.
Uh, motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Any citizens' comments on adoption? Any council discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance sixty seven twenty four passes. Ordinance sixty eight twenty four, an ordinance amending the two thousand twenty four appropriations ordinance. Someone like to introduce it?
Whereas the twenty twenty four appropriations need to be amended. Whereas certain one, number one hundred general fund line item appropriations are necessary. Whereas a certain number seven hundred general fund line item appropriation is necessary. Whereas a certain number seven fifty fund, general fund line item appropriations is necessary. Whereas a certain number two hundred fund, street construction fund line item appropriations is necessary. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The twenty twenty four appropriations ordinance is amended to appropriate from the unappropriated balance to the following funds that set forth in exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. The total appropriated balance increases by said amount. The total appropriations in each respective fund mentioned above are increased by said amount. The city auditor is hereby authorized to submit changes to the city's certificate of resources pursuant to this ordinance to the Athens County Budget Commission. Five members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance and this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading through O R C seven thirty one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter section four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption pursuant to section four point one one of Nelsonville City Charter as this ordinance provides for appropriations for very extensive. Will enacted by council on first reading the twelfth day of August two thousand twenty four.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second. Roll call on suspension? We're required to suspend the rule. It's just happening.
They're enacted council on that ninth day of September.
That's one, is it, are you looking? One sixty, we're on sixty eight.
Oh, I'm fifty eight, okay, I went along.
No, no, no.
My bad. You're fine.
Mr. Taylor?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes. Okay, motion to adopt?
So moved.
Any citizens' comments on adoption?
Me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, I'm gonna ask. Is this appropriation mainly for the salary adjustments? What's the total?
Um, was, is it okay if I jump in or you still got more questions?
No, I just wanna know what is costing us for those union contracts.
Yeah, so, um, this is a good question. I know it's almost nine, everybody wants to go, there's still a ton more to do. But the truth is, we'd be remiss if we didn't go over some of this. I say it's one of the largest changes I've done in my time here, so we'd just like to cover some of this. So I didn't bring a total. They're, they're on the back, but it's, it's over, it's over a quarter million dollar change. So, finance, that's including.
How much is general fund? Can you go by fund?
That would be just the general funds, yeah, 'cause the two contracts we're talking about are police and fire. So I wanna be cautious and say that it's nothing to do with, this discussion has nothing to do with performance, the positions, the individuals, this is nothing inside of the department. Uh, but as a fiscal officer, uh, I, I do have a duty to say that this is exclusively likely to be deficit territory. So obviously you can't tell the final deficit total till the end of the year, revenues are predicted within a margin of error, but, um, that would be a very serious number. Uh, it'll impact our budget discussions in the next couple of months. Uh, we'll have to make space for these costs for next year by cutting from other things, primarily usually, uh, and cutting environment equipment and other investments like that. because our people are our most valuable asset. I think that answers the questions. You can see here, broken down by salaries and wages and departments on the backside in the exhibit. One of the large costs to those departments, again, no offense to them, no offense to the person, this is just a purely financial discussion, is the city has an over 20% match to just their retirement portion. So anybody familiar with OKRs, which would be, for example, appointed officials, utilities, so on and so forth, administrative, it's a 14% match, but it's much higher for emergency services, it's over 20%. So basically every dollar you put in wages, you got a quarter additional just in the pension before Medicare. So that's why you see multiple line items, reading Medicare, retirement match, pickup, so on and so forth. I think that answers the question, right? I needed to say a few of those things, and just to be honest, the truth is, is that even though it's late, it's gonna be a lot later. I would feel if I was on council and the auditor didn't stand up and say at this moment, before we got the budget in the next month, and then you guys are hearing, well, we have to cut this to make room for that. If I was on council, I'd say, well, why didn't the auditor say that when we were appropriating? So I just wanted to make sure to say it, get it out there. These are numbers we're working with going forward, so.
Well, I think the discussion we had earlier with money being spent, shouldn't that have played into the conversation, what we're looking at now? Or am I misreading this? The, the money being spent earlier.
Today or?
Today, right now, yeah. We just had a discussion about Devon's salary and then the pump truck and things like that.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And then you say we're, we're close to a deficit.
Yeah, I, it's... When I say deficit, I'm specifically talking about the general funds. So it's my hope that the other funds have a significant enough surplus although the wire fund's budgeted to be in deficit, so it's not extremely likely. But yes, the general fund is always the concern. It's what funds much of City Hall outside of the utilities. And we want... The majority of our financial indicators the state gives cities and villages are based off the general funds because the lifeblood of City Hall is the general fund. So the fact that we've added expense, it's not, the sky, the sky's not falling, I'm not trying to generate... You know, there's any reporters watching, I don't wanna generate headlines. But what I'm saying, I'm just, I do think that council, we've had this discussion some one-on-one, we've had it some in this room for committees, but in fact, in my last auditor report, there's a very... Which has been a little, a minute now, been a few months. There was a very purposeful verbiage change in what I used because the general funds are just going to be in a different picture for the next three to five years. And I think it's worth bringing up today. Any other questions?
Well, any other citizens' comments?
Yes, but I don't... You guys approved the ordinances for this expenditure. Were you forced, or were your hands forced? Because were the contracts signed before they got to you? I mean, there's a... The last two to three to four meetings when all of this has come up, in my mind, there were red flags a while back. And I wonder why we're in this position tonight? 'Cause you guys are the responsible for appropriations and finances. You know, he can warn you. As a former auditor, I attempted nicely to warn you. That's all I'm asking. What happened?
Well, I think the contracts were signed and then we found out about it, for one thing. But I was told also by Mr. Con Jimmy, shortly after that, that he said, I'm worried about this, that he said, we've got 30 days to get out of any contract I sign. That's what he told me.
That's interesting.
That's new.
That's what he told me.
They went down, why?
So that was not in a council meeting?
No, no. No, that wasn't, that wasn't an executive session or a council, no.
I'll just state too, I...
Do I have an answer from you guys?
So I don't know how much we can discuss currently, based on the fact that we're gonna be going into the executive session to discuss some issues tonight. So I don't know what all we can... Really how far into this we can go, but the reality is we gave directions to the city manager on the negotiations on labor contracts and we did not, we didn't get that, what we asked for. So that's, that's gonna be the short answer. We didn't get what we, we gave direction on work as far as increases on the labor contracts and we did not get that, what we asked for. In fact, it was much higher, which we did explain in some other meetings, public meetings. And so that's... I think we should leave it at that.
And I understand what you're saying, Corey, but the public doesn't want their city to go into financial problems.
And nobody, nobody at this table wants us to go through that.
And I think that publicly, you need to address that to us and give us some answer as to how this all happened and how is it gonna be precluded to the...
So I'm telling you that I don't think we can give you that answer today.
Maybe sometime?
Yes, yeah. So that's how I would leave that, if that's okay, Mr. Rowe? I was gonna say real quick, one of the, oop, I tipped over. One of the changes I asked the law director to help me work on some language for that, it's really an advisory capacity to the council, you guys have to decide in the end. But one of the questions I asked for help for language on is codifying the negotiation process, who's in the negotiations, and how council expresses its will to the negotiators. In my past experience, the auditor would be in there not to speak for management, but to answer questions from both sides. Obviously, I work here and I'm elected here, so the union knew. It was like 60/40. I'm sticking with City Hall and I've gotta get the hard answers. But they also understood generally, in fact, more than once, I had a conversation with some of the leadership that they'd rather I be there, that I would give them the honest answer if they asked. If they said, was there this much space, I would come. I wouldn't say, oh, that's just for the negotiating magic to figure out. I would just say this either exists or it doesn't, the number is this or it doesn't. So that's one of my future requests of the councils to codify that for future years. To help with the anxiety of the question, that at least I do. But in some of the questions and answers, I also sense in the room, because it's an important topic, I think it's important to say that my goal with the 2025 budget, I don't get to decide in the end, we have a lot of department heads, an acting city manager, council, a law director. My goal and the proposal to the council is to somehow wrangle all of those folks into a solution that basically... How do I say this? It's like, it's like catching a moving target. You know you can't catch it today, but if you go, if you take the shortest route this way, you know you'll eventually need it. And when I say that, we have to make some of the decisions in '25 and '26. Again, not sky is following decisions, but the type of decisions you make to prevent something like '27 or '18 being extremely challenging there. Yeah, that, I think a great point, too, 'cause I know you've been in negotiations before. And just for the record, our city auditor and our city law director were not invited into those negotiations.
Yeah, I, I knew that, and that's what I was gonna say, if I could just mention to you that we had city manager, city auditor, and the city law director in every negotiation. And we were called into executive session, law director and the city auditor to be continuous updates as to discussions and percentages of what each side was asking for. The feedback to you guys is important, and that sounds like that's what you did not receive.
Well, if I made two things, obviously this contract's our employee favorable, and this is year one of the three-year contract. So we'll see where we're at when the next contract rolls around.
Is it three-year?
It's a three-year contract. The second point is, um... Well, maybe I'll hold up on the second one. I think, I think a lot of people understand the second point without me saying that at the time that these negotiations go on. So with that, is there any further council discussion? Let's call the rule on adoption.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ordinance 6824 passed. Ordinance 6924, an ordinance authorizing application for acceptance of an entry into a Ohio EPA Water Pollution Control Loan Fund Agreement on behalf of the city of Nelsonville for the design of Phase V sewer project and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan. If someone would like to introduce it?
An ordinance authorizing application for acceptance of and entry into an Ohio EPA Water Pollution Control Loan Fund Agreement on behalf of the city of Nelsonville for the design of the Phase V sewer project and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan. Whereas the city of Nelsonville seeks to design a Phase V sewer project, whereas the city of Nelsonville intends to apply for an Ohio EPA Water Pollution Control Loan Fund loan to finance and design, to finance the design of the project. Whereas the Ohio EPA requires the government authority to pass legislation for application of a loan and the execution of an agreement as well as designating a dedicated repayment source. Whereas the call for nominations is anticipated on August 12, 2024, and nominations will be due thirty days thereafter. Whereas the maximum grant award for the Phase V sewer project is $4 million. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. Nelsonville City Council finds that it is necessary to complete the Phase V sewer project for the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city of Nelsonville. Council also finds it is necessary to apply for a loan, a design loan from the Ohio EPA Water Pollution Control Loan Fund. The acting city manager, city manager and/or police chief of the city of Nelsonville shall be and hereby is authorized to request from the Ohio EPA Water Pollution Control Loan Fund financing required to complete the design of the Phase V project. The targeted project cost shall be $4 million. Repayment money is loaned from the Ohio EPA WPCLF shall be paid out of wastewater residents generated from Nelsonville wastewater customers. City council hereby finds that this ordinance will be adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Will it be enacted by council on second reading the 9th day of September, 2024?
That's the first reading. Ordinance 7024, an ordinance authorizing preparation and submission of an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Programs and to execute contracts as required. If someone would like to introduce it? I'll, I'll introduce it.
Whereas the State Capital Improvement Program and the Local Transportation Improvement Program both provide financial assistance to political subvention for capital improvement to public infrastructure. Whereas the city of Nelsonville is planning to make capital improvements to the city with the 2025 road reconstruction and resurfacing project. Whereas the infrastructure improvement herein above described is considered to be a priority need for the community and it's a qualified project under the OPWC programs. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The city manager, acting city manager and/or police chief of the city of Nelsonville shall be and hereby is authorized to apply to the Ohio Public Works Commission for funds for capital improvements to the city relating to the 2025 road reconstruction and resurfacing project. Nothing in this ordinance shall be construed as authorizing the city manager, acting city manager, and/or police chief to sign any agreement. Any agreement to which the city is asked to agree shall be timely submitted to council for approval prior to the execution of any such agreement. Council will authorize such execution by separate legislation. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Will it be enacted by council on second reading the 9th day of September, 2024?
That's first reading on that.
The next ordinance does change something that may need to be discussed in executive session regarding the police department, public bargaining agreement. So, yeah, council wants to make that mention, but this also after executive session.
Okay, so I make a motion to do this ordinance after executive session.
Second. Please, one.
Uh, I'm sorry, 7224.
72, okay.
There's still 7124, right? No, for the second of that, though? Yeah, okay.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
You have an 7124. Oh, this was the one, I believe, so I talked to Mr. Coliver and Mr. Cohen earlier today, I believe this one can be tabled until the next meeting. This is relating to reappropriations necessitated by the correction or repair of the simple on Ford Street. Yeah, is that correct?
Yes.
All motion to table, um, ordinance 7124. I'll second it.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, so Resolution 2298, resolution authorizing the city to enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for installing a wood-framed shelter house at the Nelsonville Dog Park. If someone would like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
A resolution authorizing the city to enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for installing a wood-framed shelter house at the Nelsonville Dog Park. Whereas, city council by Resolution 2282 previously authorized the city manager to apply for a nature work stream from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. Whereas ODNR has awarded the city a grant in the amount not to exceed $21,349 for install a wood-framed shelter house with electric and lighting at the Nelsonville Dog Park. and lighting at the Nelsonville Dog Park. Whereas ODNR requires the city to enter into a nature work local assistance grant agreement as a condition for the grant award. Whereas it is in the best interest of the city to enter into the nature works local assistance grant agreement to install a wood-framed shelter house at the Nelsonville Dog Park. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The city manager, acting city manager and/or police chief is hereby authorized and directed to execute the nature works local assistance grant agreement attached to you and incorporated herein by reference as exhibit one. The city and its officers shall comply with and fulfill all obligations and provisions applicable to the city in the nature works local assistance grant agreement, and all city officers shall take all reasonably necessary steps to carry the nature works local assistance grant agreement into execution. The city attorney is hereby instructed to immediately complete the attorney certification in accordance with law and return the same to ODNR. Resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law, duly adopted by council on first reading on the twelfth day of August two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, any citizens' comments on this resolution? Any council discussion? Motion to adopt? Salute.
Okay.
Let's call the room.
Mr. Clumman?
Yes.
Mr. Son?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Resolution two-two-nine-eight passes. Uh, resolution two-two-nine-nine, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with DLZ Ohio for professional services to install bus stops for the ATH Nelsonville Mobility Corridor. If someone would like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
Whereas, City Council by resolution twenty-three fifty-six previously authorized the city manager to submit an application to participate in the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Ohio Department of Transportation Transportation Alternative Program attached and to execute contracts as required. Whereas, under TAP, the ATH Nelsonville Mobility Corridor has been established. Whereas, as part of the ATH Nelsonville Mobility Corridor, there is a need to install one or more bus stops within the city to facilitate mobility of persons to and from entering Nelsonville. Whereas, the installation of one or more bus stops will include replacement of sidewalks, pro-ramps, curbs, and crosswalks. Whereas, it is advantageous and desirable to the city and to the local businesses to encourage persons from outside the city to travel to the city and patronize local businesses. Whereas, DLZ Ohio is willing to perform all professional services as may be authorized by the city for the installation of one or more bus stops and related replacement work. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The city manager, acting city manager and/or police chief is hereby authorized and directed to execute the agreement between the city and DLZ Ohio for professional services attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference as exhibit one. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law, duly acted by council on first reading on the twelfth day of August two thousand twenty-four.
I might, I might have missed it, but was there a dollar amount with that, or is it just whatever DLZ gives us or uses? They just don't appear.
I may have asked the question correctly.
Who's paying for it?
Yeah, who's paying for it? Yeah, thank you.
I can answer part of this.
Thank you.
ODOT primarily through the transportation grants program, forgetting what TAP stands for, but I know it starts with transportation, and the city match is fifty thousand. So I don't remember the whole project size, but I know there's a city match of fifty thousand.
So our minimum thing is fifty thousand, our maximum is fifty thousand.
Yeah, and that's been, that was appropriated as part of the regular budget this year.
Okay.
I, an email from DLZ today has this written, "Total project cost is six-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars. ODOT grant covers five-hundred-and-forty-six thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. There's an RTPO grant of fifty thousand dollars and a city match of thirty-four thousand six-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Project includes sidewalk improvements along Chestnut, Jefferson, Columbus Streets to create a complete safe corridor from the square to the Kroger area. Newer sidewalks in some areas along Chestnut and Jefferson will not be replaced because they're already in good condition." That's the update I got from them.
Any other council discussion? Motion to adopt? Salute. I'll second. Please call the role on adoption.
Mr. Son?
Yes.
Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Clumman?
Yes.
Resolution two-two-nine-nine passes. Uh, resolution two-three-zero-zero, a resolution authorizing and ratifying the city manager's engagement of litigation counsel for the city for cer- certain litigation matters. And just one minute. Okay, if someone would like to introduce it?
Whereas the City of Nelsonville, various members of Nelsonville City Council in their official capacity and the city manager in his official capacity remain respondent in a first court action style state, ex, Gregory Smith versus City of Nelsonville et al., Athens County Court of Common Pleas, case number two-four CI zero-one-four-four. Whereas the City of Nelsonville and members of Nelsonville City Council in their official capacity remain respondents in a second court action, uh, state, ex, Gregory Smith et al. versus Greg Mett et al., Athens County Court of Common Pleas, case number two-four CI zero-one-eight-zero, but the complaint misspelled several members' names which have since been corrected. Whereas the city has engaged attorneys with the firm of Remiger Company, LPA, to represent the city in the first court action. Whereas the Remiger attorneys have expeditiously worked on the first court action to achieve a swift resolution to the case while minimizing the direct litigation costs to the city in efforts for which the city council is grateful. Whereas the city has reported the second court action to the city's insurance carrier and anticipate the city's insurance carrier will appoint the attorneys with the firm of Remiger Company, LPA, to represent the city in connection with the second court action. Whereas the city also wishes to engage attorneys with Grove Law Office to serve as additional litigation counsel to the city in connection with the second court action, and such attorneys have agreed to represent the city in such capacity at a reduced hourly rate below the specified in his city attorney agreement entered into between the city and Jonathan U. Road. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. City Council hereby confirms the city's engagement of attorneys with the firm of Remiger Company, LPA, as litigation counsel for the city in connection with the first court action at the following hourly rates. Partner, one ninety-five per hour; associate, one sixty-five per hour; law clerk or paralegal, one twenty-five per hour. Council hereby confirms the city's reporting of the second court action to the city's insurance carrier, anticipate the insurance carrier will appoint attorneys with the firm of Remiger Company, LPA, to represent the city in connection with the second court action. Council hereby confirms the city's engagement of attorneys with Grove Law Office to serve as an additional litigation counsel to the city in connection with the second court action at a rate of one hundred and fifty dollars per hour, which rate is a significant reduction from the rate specified in city attorney agreement entered into between the city and Jonathan U. Road. Council hereby instructs city litigation counsel to take such steps as are reasonable to minimize the city's litigation costs while fully protecting the city's law enforcement. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly adopted by council on first reading on the twelfth day of August two thousand twenty-four.
Any citizens' comments?
Well, thank you, Jonathan. But secondly, there's no sort of estimate of how, what this is going to cost, it's really?
Not at this time for the first court action. Hopefully, we can get that resolved very quickly, even this week, which will keep the costs very low. I haven't even, the reason why I have wanted Remiger to handle that case is because we were able to negotiate a low case, or, sorry, low rates for them, which would have been cheaper than having me do it, and plus, they have, they've developed very good relations with the other side's attorney, so I knew that that would help expedite that. So I anticipate that coming, and I just don't have a estimate at this time.
Any further comments? Council discussions?
Do we know what this is about? Somebody called Brew, or even all. I mean, do we, do we know what, can you, can you say what's?
Sure. So, one forty-four case, that's dealing with public records. My understanding is Remiger has ensured that all of those records have been produced. It's just now a question of how to resolve and close the case. The one eighty case, that is related to the ballot initiative.
Oh, so there's two, there's two different?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Any other council discussion?
Yes.
Let's call the room. I'm sorry, motion to adopt? Motion to adopt?
Okay.
Let's call the room.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Clumman?
Yes.
Mr. Son?
Yes.
Resolution two-three-zero-zero passes. Resolution two-three-zero-one, a resolution authorizing the city to negotiate an engagement of a human resources consultant to develop a comprehensive HR policy for the city and to enter into a contract thereto. If someone would like to introduce it? I'll introduce it.
Whereas the city is in need of a comprehensive and thorough HR policy for the city. Whereas, Sherry Long Stevens has indicated a willingness to provide professional services to the city to prepare a comprehensive and thorough HR policy for the city. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The city manager, acting city manager and/or police chief is hereby authorized and directed to seek out and negotiate an engagement of a human resources consultant to develop a comprehensive HR policy for the city. The city manager, acting city manager and/or police chief is hereby directed to immediately commence and carry out such negotiations with all due speed and diligence. If in the sole discretion of the city manager, acting city manager and/or police chief, it is determined that the services agreement attached to you as exhibit one is the best option for the city, the city manager, acting city manager and/or police chief is hereby authorized and directed to enter into such services agreement. This resolution shall not financially obligate the City of Nelsonville unless and until such financial obligation is approved by separate ordinance duly acted by council. The council hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in meetings open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly acted by council on first reading on the twelfth day of August two thousand twenty-four.
Any citizens' comments?
I don't know if anything needs changed here, however, that firm is, the quote we have is a very outdated offer. It's a year and a half or so old. So I reached out to the Mayor's Partnership for Prosperity and the Republican School to have a meeting with them to identify some other consultants, um, just to try and broaden my options and see what other mistow we could go with for that service.
Do you have like a limit that you're willing to pay? Is there probably a budgeted amount?
That's, one of the purposes of the meeting is to find out how much those services usually run and.
See if you can afford it.
I'm not certain of that cost.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may, I think that's why in the ordinance, it says that there shall be no spending of funds.
I did read that, yeah.
Yeah. There's some uncertainty about it, we don't want to.
Any citizens, or I'm sorry, council discussions? I think this is long, long overdue, and hopefully it's something that we can afford, because really, we can't afford not to.
Yeah, I hope we can afford it with that outstanding contract negotiations as well. Just throwing it out there.
I hope we can, because I think us hiring outside firms will be cheaper than us having full-time HR department.
Absolutely, I believe that. But.
On my own.
And we still can wait.
I forget that. Any? I've been confused.
Any other?
Can I just, can I just add to the calculation? One of the things that we have to look at in my position is risk assessment, particularly as to how it can cost the city in future dollars, and it should be said that, you know, even if the firm charges, let's say, twenty thousand dollars a year, the city has recently, especially the last several years, I'll make it short on comments, has, has experienced extraordinarily higher costs due to lack of HR policies, through settlements, arbitrations, so on and so forth, far higher than twenty thousand over the last few years, and in fact, our insurance provider is kind of begging us to implement this. In fact, it was given to this council in writing, uh, six months ago, so you guys know in writing that the folks who are on the hook for us also would really like something. So, again, there's always a cost calculation, yes, but we've really got to close this risk, this gaping, by-called risk, which is human resources. Wasn't, Mr. Seppner, wasn't that also a recommendation from the auditors? Yes. Their audit? Yeah. Yes. Thank you.
Any other discussions? Motion to adopt? Allo. Let's call the room.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Clumman?
Yes.
Mr. Son?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Resolution two-three-zero-one passes. Resolution two-three-zero-two, a resolution appointing special counsel in the matter of council investigation of the city manager. And is this one we want, a motion to?
Um, actually, we've done that. The only thing that I, I didn't know what her rate was, so I have it on the, if you have it, there seems to be, that could be commended to the line, but I just didn't have it.
Do you just want a copy of the line? If you engage another?
Yeah. My look there. Looks like it's much cheaper.
So I make it my word here. So I make a, my word, yeah.
2302.
So I make a motion on item two, they compensate it at the rate of $350 an hour. Make a motion.
A second.
Oh, to amend it?
Yes, to amend it, I'm sorry.
To add the dollar. All the resolutions. Almost here?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right. That's out.
You have?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Mr. Duffin?
Yes.
And if you'll read the resolution. I'll, I'll introduce it. Oh, I'm sorry.
And councils, whereas section 6.05 of Nelsonville City Charter provide, provides in part, quote, "When necessary, the council may appoint special legal counsel to represent the city together with or in place of the city attorney," end quote. Whereas the city attorney is recused from the matter of council's investigation of the city manager. Whereas attorney Beverly A. Meyer, Esquire of the firm, law firm, Grigor Grayden, has agreed to serve as special counsel in the matter. Whereas the city desires to engage attorney Meyer in the matter. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Council hereby appoint attorney Beverly A. Meyer, Esquire of the law firm, Grigor Grayden, as special counsel in the matter of council's investigation of the city manager, and shall have full power as provided by law to conduct such investigations, including any appropriate resolution resulting from such investigation. Attorney Meyer shall be compensated at the rate of $350 per hour. The president of council is hereby authorized to sign an engagement letter with attorney Meyer, which shall set forth the terms of the special counsel's authority and duty, and the terms of her compensation. Any appropriations of funds to compensate special counsel shall be provided for by separate orders of council. The council hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly adopted by council on first reading on the 12th day of August 2024.
Any citizens' comments on this resolution? Council discussions?
I think it's a lot. I think that there should be a cap put on it, like, once you reach X amount of dollars, you have to come back. Because, yeah, because I know how these investigations can get out of control with prior history with Mr. Gleason. He did, told him that you had this, and if it exceeded that, you had to come back and explain to us why and where you're at with it, you know? I just.
I, I think even better yet, and I, I like that idea, but I think even better yet is if, to me, if you give somebody money, they're going to spend it. So perhaps we could have an update or something to see where they're at and then cut them off, rather than saying you got $30,000 or whatever. And, and another thing, how did we arrive at this $350 an hour?
That was two fifty, no, it was three fifty.
So at this point, I'd like to make a motion to table this till actuary executive session, and we can discuss the contract and the scope of the investigation.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to table this for now.
Second.
Are we clouding though? Just the amendment of that money.
Greg, can you just make a quick point? You haven't let us know anything about what happened with Congeny. And now you're charging money, and we just had a big discussion about the finances. People were already asking questions, and now you're putting money to it, and you're paying to stay home. I'm just throwing it out. Be careful.
Okay, motion, call the roll on table.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson? Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Duffin?
Yes.
Resolution 2303, a resolution authorizing the city to negotiate and enter into a memorandum of understanding with Nelsonville York City Schools for a school resource officer. If someone would like to introduce it?
A resolution, whereas the city currently provides a school resource officer to Nelsonville York City Schools, for which the city is compensated by Nelsonville York City Schools. Whereas there is a need to negotiate and enter into a renewal of the memorandum of understanding between the city and Nelsonville York City Schools for the SRO. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The police chief is hereby authorized to negotiate and enter into a renewal of the city's agreement between the city and Nelsonville York City Schools for the city's provision of a school resource officer. Any memorandum of understanding should include and set forth Nelsonville York City Schools' obligation to provide compensation for the SRO. The council hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in meetings open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly adopted by council on first reading on the 12th day of August 2024.
Any citizens' comments on this resolution? Council discussions?
I, I think last year, Devin, wasn't there something about when school was out that we had to, yeah, we changed that? Yeah, is that in this resolution?
So this is just authorizing us to negotiate the?
Authorizing the negotiation, okay. But that'll?
In the plan negotiations, there will be clarifications as to duties and responsibilities during summertime, and then the pay rates will be updated to match the meeting contract.
Thank you. That was my question. So we'll negotiate potential increase in the compensation.
It's, in terms of the compensation, it's just being changed to match the contract.
Yeah.
Previously, you had a specific, specific pay rate set for the SRO.
Okay.
And it's being updated to match. The line will be more broad one, it doesn't need to just match together.
Okay.
The collective bargaining.
All right. You just add specifically to, sorry, that he, the chief's talking about, acting city manager's talking about the compensation the city receives in return, so the school actually pays the vast majority of the SRO.
So that'll match the contract increases, the percentage wise? I'm sure that's the goal. Okay, great. One plus with that.
Yeah, only one.
Any other council discussion? Motion to adopt? Court call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Duffin?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Resolution 2303 passes. And the one we're looking for, for now, the last one, resolution 2304, a resolution authorizing painting lines along and upon September Street and Rocky Boots Way in different colors. Someone would like to introduce it?
Whereas city council wishes to recognize Robert Taylor, an employee of the city, for a worthy idea for beautifying the city. Whereas the worthy idea is painting in different colors lines along and upon September Street and Rocky Boots Way in an aesthetically appealing manner. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The street department is hereby authorized and directed to paint the center line along and upon September Street and Rocky Boots Way, the center line, in such different colors as have been proposed. Council thanks and recognizes Robert Taylor for his worthy idea for beautifying the city. Council sincerely thanks him for his service to the people of the city of Nelsonville. City council hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in a meeting, in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly adopted by council on first reading on the 12th day of August 2024.
Any citizens' comments?
I have a really quick one, sorry. You're gonna have to have one more, Council Duffin. The, I wanted to thank Mr. Taylor is actually watching the meeting right now. So I, I have to say a quick thing about, he's an employee of mine, one of three, and he's coming up on his retirement, retirement eligible date in just a couple of months, actually. And I just wanted to commend him because there's any number of folks who could be coming up on a date like that and just be checking out and ready to go and saying, forget this little stuff and, you know, leaving it for the next person. I don't, I'm hoping he doesn't retire in October, but he's eligible. But instead, among, among his very unique personality, he shows a dedication to the city. And his idea here, of course, is to memorialize both the police and fire departments on these two streets. I think he has some further ideas actually beyond the paint, but this was his first start, and he did so without any help from me, just because it's been very swamped in the office. And I just wanted to thank him for taking this up on his own, coming to committees. And only the reason he didn't come tonight was he knew it'd be a long meeting, so.
He just texted me, he just texted me and said, sit down, Taylor.
Yeah, thanks, Robert.
Thanks, Robert.
Maybe if there's a ribbon, he could cut the ribbon.
There you go.
Any, any council discussions?
Yes, I was gonna talk before Mr. Sappington did, but then he just, you know. I was gonna thank Mr. Taylor also, because he came to the street committee meeting and proposed this, and I think it's a great idea. And just for clarification's sake, we were gonna paint the center line on September Street red in honor of the fire department, and then on Rocky Boots Way, we're gonna paint the center line blue in honor of the police department. So I think it's, again, it's a great idea, just echoing Mr. Sappington's point and the fact that this was one of our own, that proposed this, I think is a great thing as well, so.
Are we gonna have a white line too?
Well, there's a white lines there, and it'll go in between.
Go to yellow.
So it'll be red. It'll be. Yep, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jason.
It's gonna be yellow ones, and now we got a separation in the middle, and the middle will be red on September, and the middle will be blue on Rocky Boots.
Oh, not on both streets, this, okay, that's correct, got it.
Okay, I do would like to thank Mr. Taylor very much, thank you.
Absolutely.
I like to, I thought he also proposed one street with green stripes for?
I haven't got anything back from the state on that.
Yeah.
It must have been 278 or whatever.
Any other council comments? Motion to adopt, salute.
Second.
Court call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor? I'm sorry, Mr. Duffin?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes. Hold on, let me shrink a little bit.
Mr. Blom?
Mr. Blom?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, let my neck get a little bit there, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, resolution 2304 passes.
Mr. President, I make a motion to, before we go into executive session, that we allow Mr., or Chief Barber to make his appointments and allow the firefighters to go home before we go into executive session.
Okay, should we do the city manager's report?
That's part of the report. So for the city manager's report, I'd like to recommend that we hire Nicholas Sanchez as a part-time firefighter for the fire department.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, as part-time?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to hire Nicholas Sanchez as a part-time firefighter.
Sergeant.
Based on the recommendation of, based on the recommendation of the city manager, acting city manager, Mr. Tolliver.
And chief.
And fire, and chief barber.
We should move it time when everyone can agree.
Yeah.
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Court call the roll.
I'm Nicholas Sanchez.
Yes.
Is that him?
Mr. Duffin?
Yes.
Mr. Blom?
Mr. Blom? I'm thinking of that.
He's in a parade.
He said, yes, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Then I also need to recommend we hire a full-time police officer, Richard Klein, to a full-time provisional.
That's full-time provisional?
Yes. It fills my last second slot.
Assistant Joe Lynn from Rochester?
Yes, Chief Rochester, yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to hire Richard Klein as a full-time provisional police officer based on a recommendation of city manager Devin Tolliver.
Over.
Second.
Is there a second?
Is that effective today?
Oh, 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 second. Seconded, okay.
Mr. Duffin?
Yes.
Mr. Blom?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Anything else?
Betty Jo, it would be pending, it would be today, and it would be pending the civil service passing of the test.
Otherwise, I'm still working on vetting or VWC violations. We're very close to having that done. Last, then actually got a churching excavation policy that's been passed and signed up on by all the street department employees that they have read and understand the policy. You guys asked me to follow up about the abandoned mine land economic revitalization grant. We've actually submitted a letter of interest through BLZ. We're waiting to hear back from this, anyone steps to go on further from there. Front of the Hill setup is underway, as everyone's probably noticed. They actually have so many vendors this year applying to come and give a tour some away. They said that's the first time in six years.
That's great.
So actually pretty good. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Tolliver. Go to the order. Ms. Sonny, do you have anything?
I'll have this.
Mr. Duffin?
I would just thank God that Susan likes to read. Once again, thank you for your job. I think you go and appreciate, we appreciate everything you do. And to the Nelsonville, the old timers game, it was a great, a great draw. I mean, I drove by, and I mean, there was other people there, so. And that's all I have. Mr. Flowers?
I have a couple of things. I asked Devin about that permit for Mr. Rawl?
Yes.
Rawl? Rawl?
Rawl?
And, but, but I don't know if we can, Bernie Rawl and Jennifer, his wife, applied for a liquor and beer permit for their.
I have it right here.
Oh, you have it?
Yes.
Yeah, she has.
I do have it.
Oh, yeah, can we, can we, do we need to approve that?
No, you just needed to.
No, you just need to decide if you wanna have a meeting, if you wanna have a, oppose it at all. If not, we just send it back.
What, what do you need to send it back? Send it back approved, did we approve it?
Yeah. They, all they wanna know is if, if the city has a problem, then we can ask for a meeting with the liquor control people. I thought, I thought they had it.
They do. They have a liquor license, or they have a beer license, I think.
They, they, I think they want a premise, on premise license. I, I, I don't know what it is, I'm just assuming, I think we need, oh, no. Is it on premise? I think it is.
It doesn't, oh, it just gives me the name.
Sure.
The name.
I don't know what the process that I've, we only had, the only one I ever had to do was, was the Mine Tavern, the transfer of the Mine Tavern, which was no big deal. And I think we did one for Jim Edwards, but I don't know how that one went.
You can have that, put that by there.
Was it just for, to sell liquor, or is it for, um, are they putting a bar in?
No, it's just to sell, it's just to, like, if they.
That's what I was thinking, they have a store already. Hey, here's, here's the deal, all personal differences aside, what's it matter? Just do it. And the property.
Absolutely.
You know what? No, I, I don't, yeah. I mean, I mean, that's coming from me, and I mean. I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't think it's a big deal. The only time I think it becomes an issue is that they're in such a proximity to.
Churches.
Churches.
Hold on, please. Hold on, please.
Finish, I just have a point, when, when you're done.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yep, I was just gonna say, maybe if there's a motion just to approve it, I haven't had it yet to, look, get over, I just wanna make sure that there aren't any problems.
Yeah.
So liquor commission can kind of.
Pending your approval.
Well, not my approval.
You're looking over legalities, there you go. Works.
But by the nineteenth.
Yes, I can do that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, I think the only time we've had issues in the past where we had to have public hearings is if it's in like a thousand feet of a school or.
Church, church.
And that, that's what I would just be kinda looking at.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything that close, so no. So.
You won't make a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve, to allow that to happen. Mr. Rawl and Mrs. Rawls', um, application for that pending approval from, or pending review from the City Manager, or City Attorney for any legalities.
Yes, I'm second.
Okay, second, all right. Court call the roll, please.
Sonic, yes. Mr. Guffey?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Flower. Mr. Taylor.
Yeah.
Mr. Lawson?
Yeah.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Anything else, Mr. Flowers?
Yeah, and then one more thing, um, I attended Friday, I think it was Friday, um, the Code Enforcement Officer and myself attended the Code Enforcement Meeting in Lancaster. And it was, uh, Joe Cozy, who is the Code Enforcement Officer in Logan, uh, puts these on, and it was a wealth of information, I mean, an absolute wealth of information. And I think Bill and I both thoroughly enjoyed it, they fed us pizzas, I mean, it was really a nice, and there was a bunch of different agencies there that I, I think that, I would love to find a place in Nelsonville to, uh, to, uh, put the next meeting on for this symposium that they have, uh, for, they've got Athens, Logan, Lancaster, I mean, there, there's a bunch of different ones. Well, I was thinking about that, I was thinking about that, and maybe Mr. Tudor could assist us on that, so. But anyway, that, that, those are the two things I wanted to bring, bring up, and I would encourage anybody if they get an email in our email about the next one, it would be really a nice thing to go to just for, for ideas about, like, like, uh, Jane was there from the, uh, Solid Waste, and, um, she's gonna give me some information about forming, uh, Community Cleanup Day, and not, not for big items, just going around picking up cups and, and doing, doing things in the community, kind of like they're doing now for the Parade of the Hills.
So, Mr. Flowers, could you send an email to council members and administration, kind of, a overview of?
Sure.
So we all know what you're talking about?
Sure.
And then we could take it up, we could take it up in committee and, and move forward.
Sure. I'd be glad to do that.
All right.
That's all I got.
Mr. Taylor?
Uh, yes, two things, um, hope everybody has a safe, uh, Parade of the Hills, and I'm very excited that they, uh, um, have a, a lot of vendors this year, so I'm very excited about that. I'm hoping that everybody goes down and supports them, um, and, uh, you know, I think the community can help make that a great event, so, and they've put in a lot of work over the last year to, to get it to this point, so I think it's worthwhile supporting. Uh, second thing is, uh, we discussed, um, Ms. St. Carre's email, um, regarding collaborating with her, um, organization, which I think is the, this.
Board of Development.
Board of De- Development, Developmental Disabilities. Yeah, that's correct. And, um, uh, so there's, um, folks that are part of her agency that, um, would like to go to the pool, and I think they need support, um, in order to do so. And so she was suggesting that, uh, the city possibly collaborate with their organization to assist in that manner, um, and, uh, so I, I moved that we would assist, um, we're coming close to the end of pool season, but hopefully we can collaborate if the City Manager can work that out. Yes, sir.
I'm gonna move it tomorrow, a little bit.
Perfect, there we go. Okay. So I, I'd like to see the city participate in that. I know Mr. Booth would be too, seeing how he keeps texting me, reminding everybody about it.
He's looking, time to go to bed.
I know, he's watching, he's texting me. So he says, go to bed. I didn't forget.
Yeah, and Devin, after your meeting, if you could kinda shoot an email out?
Oh, I know.
Let people know where the.
The initial ideas are finding either way to get them additional food passes or additional offering to special.
Yeah, it's definitely a worthy thought. Absolutely. Anything else?
That's everything for me, thank you.
Mr. Lawson?
No, nothing.
Okay. Yes, Parade of the Hills, let's hope for a great, great week and that the rain holds off. Yeah, we don't like to say that. And I wanna thank everybody's patience for tonight, um, and council working through all this. We got a little bit longer to go, but we'll get there. So with that, I make a motion to go into executive session. Under O R C one-two-one-point-two-two-G for Personnel and Legal Matters and Pending Litigation and the Police Department CBA Memorandum of Understanding. We'll invite in Mr. Rowe and interim manager, Mr. Tolliver, and the time is straight up, ten o'clock.
I'm, Mr. President, I'm sorry, I, I need to give one small thing with, with all of that, so if I could be invited as well.
Okay, well.
I never asked to be invited, so.
Well, invite in Mr. Sappington. And, I'm, yeah, I made the motion, is there a second? So moved. Court call the roll. Here's a second.
Uh, Mr. Guffey?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yeah.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion to return from executive session at ten fifty-one. So moved. Second.
Third. Fourth.
Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic? Yes. Mr. Guffey?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to amend the agenda to add Resolution two-three-zero-five. So moved.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic? Yes. Mr. Guffey?
Yes.
Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we'll start with Resolution two-three-zero-five, a resolution reaffirming the right of the people of Nelsonville to choose their form of government for the city pursuant to procedures set forth in the Ohio Constitution. If someone would like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
First. Sorry. Whereas the Ohio Constitution guarantees to the people of a municipality the right to choose their form of government, whereas the Council of the City of Nelsonville desires to reaffirm the city's commitment to respecting the right of the people of the City of Nelsonville to choose the form of government for the City of Nelsonville. Whereas it has long been the legal position of the City of Nelsonville that the proper procedures for lawfully abolishing the Nelsonville City Charter, to the people choose, so choose to exercise their right, are set forth in the Ohio Constitution and applicable implementing state law and not Nelsonville City Charter. Whereas Article Ten of Nelsonville City Charter lays out the procedures by which the people of Nelsonville may exercise their initiative and referendum power for ordinances or resolution. Whereas Nelsonville City Charter cannot be abolished by an ordinance or resolution because Nelsonville City Charter is of superior legal, superior legal obligation to any Nelsonville ordinance or resolution. Whereas therefore, the initiative procedures set forth in Art, Article Ten of Nelsonville City Charter do not apply to abolishing Nelsonville City Charter. Whereas therefore, Nelsonville City Charter, Section ten-point-zero-three, pertains to initiative, referendum, and recompetition other than the abolishment of the Charter. Whereas the people of the City of Nelsonville should have, should have clarity as to the proper procedures to follow for the exercising the people's right to choose the form of government for the city. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The people of the City of Nelsonville have the right guaranteed to them under the Ohio Constitution to choose the form of government for the city. The proper and lawful procedure for exercising the right of the people of the City of Nelsonville to choose the form of government for the city are set forth in the Ohio Constitution in implementing state law, not Nelsonville City Charter. City Council hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, fully adopted by Council on first reading on the twelfth day of August, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, are there any citizens' comments?
Mr. Clear.
If, if I may, Mr. President. Yes, um, I would recommend that, um, council, that the city, um, at the appropriate time in this problem sooner than later, adopt forms for city initiative procedures that will be on file and available to any citizen who wishes to begin an initiative under the city charter, and that there be some clear checklists to them, informing them of the procedures, um, laid out in the charter to help expedite, um, that, that would be my recommendation.
Uh, should we move that to a committee then to discuss? And would that be judiciary?
I think so.
Okay. I'll, I'll make that recommendation. Definitely move that topic to Judiciary Committee, uh, to set, uh, forums, deny. I just, he's, I wanna go talk about, yeah, oh, yeah. Okay.
Council discussion. No? Motion to adopt? So moved. Second. We both moved.
Okay. Please second it.
Yep.
Okay.
Call the roll, please.
I'm trying to remember.
You're doing what?
Ms. Sonic? Yes. Mr. Guffey?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution two-three-zero-five passes. So we just need to. Uh, Resolution fifty-nine twenty-four. I'm sorry, ordinance fifty-nine twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing settlement of certain litigation and authorizing payment in case number two-four-C, one-zero-four, one-zero-one-four-four. You got C I. C I, yeah, I'll introduce it. Okay, thank you.
An ordinance authorizing settlement of certain litigation and authorizing payment in case number two-four-C-I zero-one-four-four. Whereas the parties have come to an agreement to fully resolve the issues in case number two-four-C-I zero-one-four-four. Whereas it is necessary for council to authorize payment in the amount of.
Yes, it's three, three thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy cents.
To fully resolve case number two-four-C-I zero-one-four-four. Whereas council requires that a written settlement agreement be fully executed before any settlement payment shall be dispersed. Whereas the litigation council appointed. Whereas the litigation council appointed by council pursuant to Resolution twenty-three-hundred has been working to expeditionally resolve the certain litigation while also minimizing the city's direct litigation expenses. Now therefore be intervened by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The Council of the City of Nelsonville hereby authorizes and directs the City Manager, Acting City Manager, and our Police Chief to negotiate and enter into a settlement agreement for case number two-four-C-I zero-one-four-four, as advised by the City Attorney and the City Litigation Council, appointed pursuant to Resolution twenty-three-hundred. The Council hereby authorizes and directs the City Auditor to issue a settlement payment in the amount of three thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy cents, shall, as shall be provided in the written settlement agreement fully executed by the party, provided that no payment shall be issued unless and until the City Auditor has provided a copy of such fully executed written settlement. City Council hereby finds this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. By members of council voting through defense with a due reading of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance, and this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading to O R C seven-thirty-one-point-one-five in Nelsonville City Charter, Section four-point-zero-nine to four-point-one-one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven-thirty-one-point-thirty, Article Four, Section four-point-zero-nine to four-point-one-one. As an emergency in the operation of the city government because a full resolution of case number two-four-C-I zero-one-four-four is desirable immediately to minimize litigation costs to the city and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effective on adoption. Being enacted by Council on first reading under suspension of rules, the twelfth day of August, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to suspend the rules? So moved. Second. Roll call on suspension.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic? Yes.
Motion to adopt? So moved. Second. Somebody already did that.
Yeah, yeah, so just for the public's edification, um, this settlement has, um, been recommended to the city by its legal counsel. Although there are legal arguments that may be raised in protracted litigation in which the city could prevail, that would cost many times more than the settlement amount. So the, the city's, uh, uh, legal counsel, Reminger, and I completely agree with him, recommend that the city resolve this case, and that's, that's why, um, it's been proposed to, to council.
Who will pay? Who is?
Take a guess.
Uh, the, um, others, the, the other side is Mr. Greg Smith.
Any, uh, we're working on another vehicle for, right? Any council discussion? Uh, clerk call the roll on adoption. Excuse me, McGoldheart.
Mr. Flowers? Mr. Flowers? Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Guffey?
Absolutely. Ordinance fifty-nine twenty-four passes.
Is that in reference to public records?
No.
That is, it's gonna be ruled as well.
I'm sorry. Ordinance seventy-two twenty-four, an ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding, clarifying certain language in a collective bargaining, bargaining agreement between between the city of Nelsonville and the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council.
Mr. President, I motion that we make this first reading for this ordinance and not under suspension of the rules.
There's a motion on.
I second that.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yep.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic? Yes. Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes. Well, I'll make that second reading will be September 6th, doesn't it?
Right. September 9th.
Right.
Whereas the city of Nelsonville has recently entered into a collective bargaining agreement for covered members of the Nelsonville Police Department for the period of January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2026. Whereas certain language in the collective bargaining agreement needs to be clarified. Whereas the city desires to enter into a memorandum of understanding to clarify a certain language in the collective bargaining agreement. Now therefore, be read by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Adams County, Ohio, as follows. City council hereby approves the memorandum of understanding attached here to as given one and incorporated herein by reference, which verifies certain language in the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Nelsonville and the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council, incorporated for covered members of the Nelsonville Police Department to which party the party previously agreed. The city manager, acting city manager, and our police chief is hereby authorized to sign the MOU on behalf of the city. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and that all deliberations of city council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal actions, are taking in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. This ordinance shall be effective at the earliest time permitted by law, building after by council, on second reading the night day of September, 2024.
Mr. President, I motion that we untable Resolution 2302.
I second that motion.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic? Yes. Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Yes, they've already been read, so. Council discussion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Well, second that.
Resolution number 2302. 2302, it's already been read. Okay, roll call, please. Yes.
What are we doing here?
Oh, the lawyer, appointing the lawyer.
Oh, resolution 2302.
2302. We've already read it.
Yeah, we've already read it, so.
We cabled it, we removed it off the table, so now we're voting on it.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
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 Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Motion to adjourn. Second. Third.
Ms. Sonic?
Motion to adjourn.
Is she in me?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
She wants to stay here longer.
Yeah, they're late.
Start to get late. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Yeah, yeah.